Okay, the regular meeting of the Housing Authority is now called to order. Roll call, please.
Agency members Ramirez.
Here.
Rios. Valencia.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Vice Chair Perez.
Here.
And Chair Ayella.
Here. Do we have any speaker cards for the consent counter?
No, not for the Housing Authority.
All right. There are two consent items for consideration as their motion to approve the consent counter is presented.
I'll move it.
Second.
Vic, have a roll call, please.
Agency members Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios. Valencia.
Here. I, excuse me, aye.
Hernandez.
I abstain, item 69112.
Vice Chair Perez.
Aye.
Chair Ayella.
Aye. Community Development Director's Report. Do we have a report this evening?
No reports.
No report? Okay, oral communications. Is there anyone wishing to speak under oral communications for the Housing Authority? Okay, seeing none. This meeting is adjourned. Okay, the regular meeting in Norwalk City Council is now called to order. Invocation and pledge. This evening, we're honored to welcome Pastor Manny Free of Hope City Church will lead us in tonight's invocation. Pastor Manny has been a part of the community for over 30 years and proudly calls Norwalk home for more than 20 years. He met, married his wife, and raised three children who were active in baseball and the Norwalk Little League. Pastor Manny was dedicated to community outreach programs, including Angel Chain volunteering at juvenile halls. One of his favorite things about Norwalk is having breakfast with his wife at Angie's Restaurant. He recommends the Chilaquias. Following the invocation, we are pleased to also welcome Riley Ferguson, an eighth grader at Waite Middle School, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. As a student, she was, she has been committed to developing character and leadership. Riley is a dedicated student leader who recently earned the Most Improved Cadet Award through Waite's Leadership Program and also serves on the honor roll and volleyball team. She enjoys giving back to Norwalk through ASB and Leadership and wants to become a forensic psychologist. Next year, Riley is looking forward to starting in Southeast High School and continue her aspirations of joining the military. We're proud to highlight her as a young leader in our Norwalk community. Pastor Manny and Riley, please come to the front, lead us in the invocation and then the flag salute.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, if you could rise. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before your presence. Father, we thank you for all that you've done in and through this city, Lord, and what you're continuing to do, Father. I ask and pray that tonight your hand would be upon this meeting, Lord. Father, your hand would be upon our mayor and vice mayor, our council members, that you would, in all their dealings, Lord, give them wisdom and a discerning heart, Father God. That they would be able to lead this city effectively, Lord, that they would remember that they are servants, Father. These are, Father, our native sons and daughters whom you've called to now lead us, this community, Father. And I ask and pray, Lord, that they would do it with all diligence, Father God, that you would give them grace, would give them guidance. Father, that your presence would be with them when they make difficult decisions, Lord, knowing that you are there as their confidence and as their support. Father, I thank you for the residents of this city, Father God, that they are what makes this city great. I pray your blessings over our homes and as we approach the holidays, Father, we would remember just our loved ones and those at whom might be less fortunate than us, Father. Father, I ask and pray, Lord, for our youth that I see here in the room tonight, that they are our future, and I pray that your blessing and your hand would be over them as well, that you would guide them and lead them, Lord, through the mentors and leaders that you have raised up. And Father, we ask this, Lord, your blessing over tonight, Father, and we ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus, and we all say amen.
Reese, can I have a roll call, please?
Council members Ramirez.
Here.
Rios.
Here.
Valencia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Here.
And Chair Ayella.
Here. City Attorney, can I have a closed session report, please?
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The record should reflect that the City Council had one item for closed session, which was listed and announced prior to recessing to closed session, which is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. The record should further reflect that all five members were present. That matter was discussed in closed session, but no action was taken. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report from closed session. It's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Thank you. City Council comments. Councilmember Ramirez?
No comments this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Rios?
Hi, yes, just want to welcome everyone to our meeting this evening, and I hope everyone's enjoying the weather, but at the same time staying safe and remaining dry. Remembering to please drive safe in the weather as the roads get a bit slippery and when they get wet, so please remember to drive safely. I also want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and holiday as those moments are right around the corner. I really wish you all a good, safe, happy, healthy holiday season with your family, your friends, your loved ones, and if you can and you're able to volunteer in the next couple of weeks, I know that there's opportunities here in the city of Norwalk, and I'm sure there's other organizations that may be looking for volunteers to maybe help serve a Thanksgiving meal, maybe wrap some gifts, maybe collect toys. So I would say if you can and are able to give back to our community, then I hope that you will, you will take that into consideration. I also want to mention, I want to thank Angela Zonrato. She is the Community Public Relations Director with Northgate Market, and she's also one of my commissioners on the Social Services Commission, and I recently had a conversation with her, and she's all about giving back to the community, doing as much as she can. I know that she did mention how closely she works with Gabby and her team to give back, especially to those that are in need. So I just want to publicly thank her. I also want to mention what she shared was that those families that are impacted specifically during this time where they may have a loved one, a family member, a friend, a neighbor, someone who's been impacted by the immigration raids, that they please reach out. She has actually, her and her organization have been able to give back specifically to those families here in the city of Norwalk. She shared that they've been able to do that. And one of the things that I will ask is that if you share an incident and you do so on social media, that's all, that's not necessarily the most helpful, sharing a name, maybe sharing some information on that family with someone that you trust and know can help. That's how you actually help those individuals. So just want to give her a special thank you for the work that she's doing in our community with those families that are impacted right now because of these special circumstances that we're having here in the city. So otherwise, please, everyone stay safe.
Councilmember Valencia?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I just want to mention about the Veterans Day event. We had a fantastic Veterans Day celebration and paying tribute to our veterans, and of course, it could not have happened without our staff and without our Director of Recreation and Park Services staff with public safety and everybody involved. It was a fantastic event. People were just, you know, in awe of how nice and how dedicated and how, it was just a quality day, quality event. So thank you very much. It was over by the, it was at the parking lot of the Norwalk Sports Complex, the one in front, the one just to the west. And very nice, very well attended, lots of people there, and our Assemblywoman was there, and she gave some really cool points, and then our speaker was very inspirational. He is one that is now, is residing at our Veterans Villas. So very appropriate to have someone who has had such challenges and a veteran and is now doing so well to be the main speaker, and I thought that was very inspiring and it was really great. Then we had, I attended the, on Thursday, November 13th, the Kiwanis Lotteria Night at Mr. Rosewood's with some of the Chamber people, some of the folks from different organizations, but mostly, of course, the Kiwanis group who were raising money for scholarships for all kinds of things in our community, and very happy to help and happy to have been there. And, you know, Lotteria is a game that we, in my family, growing up, that was the game that we played. We didn't have bingo. I didn't, when I went to school and, and the teacher says, okay, we're going to play bingo, and I was like, what is that? And they're like, well, it's the Lotteria, and I was like, oh, cool. And I was waiting to see all the different designs and the pictures. I said, what are these numbers for? What are these letters for? So they had to teach me how to do that. But Lotteria, definitely, at almost every gathering that we have, we've done that. And as well, I also want to echo the sentiment of Councilmember Margarita Rios and wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving and get some rest. Please stay warm and dry. This weather is crazy. As you can tell, it's affecting me and my lungs and my asthma, but under control. So anyway, happy holidays, and I will also be volunteering at, with Alliance Club and then also with Tradition over at the Norwalk Senior Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Vice Mayor Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Just a few events to comment on. I want to thank Rita and Gabby and Robert. I attended the Homeless Task Force meeting for the city of Norwalk a couple weeks ago. Thankfully, I was able to bring some resources with the Director of Homeless Services from the LA County, as well as the Director of ECR, to provide an update on Measure A and where the funding resources are going, what the goals were that were agreed upon within the county and the measure, and how those are going to be implemented in the city. And I have to say, when the task force was started years ago, there was maybe 12, 15 people sitting around the table. The entire sprawl room was filled with resources, and that's all taking place here in the city of Norwalk. So Rita, Robert, thank you all so much. Ozzy, thank you for being there as well and continuing, continuing to do what we need to do. I do want to congratulate Cerritos College and the Veterans Resource Center. I was able to attend their Military Ball last week, and they celebrated their veteran graduates from Cerritos College. Those are students that went out, joined the Armed Forces. When they came back, there's an excellent program at Cerritos College for the Veteran Resource Center. They help them get their classes and take the next steps once they have come back from serving our country, and it's always a great celebration, and I was very honored to be there and celebrate them this year. And a huge congratulations to the Culinary Arts Department at Cerritos College. They do all of the cooking there on campus. The food is amazing. If you would like to order holiday pies, you can order them directly from the Culinary Arts Department, and it's really top notch. Congratulations to three businesses that opened and cut ribbons this past week. I know Councilmember Rios and Ramirez and, and our mayor and Anna, we all, between everything that's going on, sometimes you'll have all, you'll have three of us there, sometimes it's two of us, sometimes it's one, even in the rain, we go out to celebrate our businesses. And thank you to Karen from the Chamber for partnering with the city and the businesses to really make something very, very special. And I'd like to also call attention to a program that we have here in the city of Norwalk, and I would love to see how we can continue to push this information out to our residents, and that's the Residential Backup Battery Program. So there is a website, www.norwalk.org/battery. This is a great program. If we lose power and you are in need of power for medical devices, et cetera, we want to be there to help. So Levy, if you can please work with the team to push out this information. It really is a great program, and it's something we want to be able to provide for our Norwalk residents. We did mention Thanksgiving is coming up. Blessed and thankful, Thanksgiving to all of you and your family members, but right around the corner, we go big in the city of Norwalk when it comes to the winter holidays, and we have our tree lighting and different various events. Almost every day, there's something going on, but one of my favorite is the Santa sleigh that goes around to all of our schools, neighborhoods. It's going out six nights this year. A huge thank you in advance to the Norwalk Santa Sloat Foundation for always continuing to partner with the city of Norwalk. This program has a very, very special place in my heart. I remember when it started. I think I was there when it started, and it's great to see it's continued throughout the many, many years. We won't say how many years, but we'll just say we're excited that it's continued. So make sure you find a date, find Santa here in the city of Norwalk, and enjoy making those memories with your family. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I just might, I just might mention that the Vice Mayor was in high school when it started, but I won't get any further than that. You're invited to join Seropimus International, Norwalk and San Fede Springs, California Dreamin' Holiday Gala, featuring decorated trees, music, hors d'oeuvres, and opportunity prizes galore. It's going to be Sunday, December 7th, 2025, from 2:00 to 5:00 at the Norwalk Arts and Sports Complex sprawl room, 1300, 13,000 rather, Clagdale Avenue, Norwalk, California. Tickets are $50 until November 25th. You can get tickets by calling Merrily Stephen Hagan at 562-505-0633. Proceeds will support Seropimus Dream Programs for women and girls. So it's a, you know, it's a great program. Be sure to, they're not doing that on December 7th. Definitely go. I just, I want to echo some of the other things. We went to some great ribbon cuttings, and we are always supportive of our businesses. One of the ones I think people are most excited about is the Nothing But Bunt Cakes that just opened across the street. There was a great service program that opened up during the week by the name of Dreamcatchers that provides services and whatnot to continuing students and non-traditional students, and there's some, there's just some really good stuff going on in the city of Norwalk. And I want to echo my colleagues and wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving, cherish your families, and that's an excellent time to do it, and then, like the Vice Mayor said, and then you roll into Christmas. So we're officially in the holiday season. We're unofficially officially in the holiday season, so, you know, we're there. Okay, special presentations, recognizing Norwalk High School students for designing and painting Norwalk's newest painted utility box. The city of Norwalk proudly recognizes talented students from Norwalk High School who are Valeria Badia, Yvette Calvano, Lillian Rendan, and Juan Sanchez for their exceptional designs and painting for the city's Utility Box Art Program. Through creativity and dedication, they transform, transform the utility box on Foster Road and Jersey Avenue into a vibrant masterpiece of public art for Norwalk. Their artwork captures the spirit of arts at Norwalk High School and serves as an inspiring reminder of the positive impact young people have on our city. On behalf of the City Council, we offer our sincere appreciation and our honor to present each of you with a certificate of recognition. The students help enhance our public places and bring pride to the community through their vision of art. Also, a sincere thank you to the Art in Public Places Committee members for overseeing the Utility Box Art Program. Students, please come forward to receive your certificate and join the City Council on any Art in Public Places Committee members in the audience, please come forward. Vic, I think you're here somewhere. Yeah, there you go. Who else? Oh, Kim's still here, Kim Apadaka. Victor Juan and Vanessa Armandares.
Well, this is our first one that Valeria designed and painted, and it's representative of the arts at Norwalk High School. You can see this is very colorful, and she's included all different types of arts that are offered at Norwalk High School. Our next one is from Yvette, and Yvette has another beautiful, colorful design, and it represents different activities from the band, which she's a member of the band, cheerleading Norwalk High School, I mean, as a Norwalk football player, so she's got all of the other types of the sports and the musical elements offered here. Next, we have Lillian, and Lillian represents all the arts, different programs at Norwalk High Schools. They have great, great, great programs there at the high school. And last but not least, we have Juan, who painted this beautiful horse, because you know I love horses, so this beautiful horse with, representing the Norwalk Lancers, and of course, the art banner flying behind. They have, I just need to let you know, they have a spectacular art teacher at Norwalk High School. He's also a member of our art commission, Mr. Vega, and so he actually works with all of the kids to help them come up with the designs based on the themes that the city has approved, and as you can see, they do excellent work. So this is, I think, the third box that Norwalk High School has done. They're representing the city well.
City Manager comments, Mr. Gomez. Do you have any comments?
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council. First of all, I want to wish all the families in our city a happy Thanksgiving, and that's just around the corner. The next item, want to proudly and excited to introduce Rita Ruiz as the new city's Public Safety Director, her first City Council meeting. And I'll just say a couple of sentences about her, but she has a whole resume. But Rita brings a wealth of experience to public safety, having worked in local government at the cities of Pico Rivera and Whittier, and in the federal government as a budget analyst for the Department of Justice and regional affairs specialist for the Department of Homeland Security. In the past year, Rita has served as the interim Public Safety Director effectively, leveraging the city's community policing model to reduce crime, strengthen community partnerships, and improve the lives of people who live, work, and visit Norwalk. Rita has a strong family ties to the city and holds a bachelor's degree in public safety, law, and a master's degree in public administration from the University of Southern California. We're excited to welcome her to our leadership team, and we look forward to her enthusiasm and innovative ideas she will continue to bring to our city. Rita, welcome and thank you for joining. Next, we have an award from the League of California Cities, so an award-winning program from the city of Norwalk, and this is the Helen Putnam Award. The city of Norwalk is proud to earn the Helen Putnam Award. Joining us for the, from the League of California Cities is Mr. Nicholas Cabeza, Regional Public Affairs Manager for the LA County Division. Before Nicholas informs us about the award, I'd like to recognize the following staff who are here to receive it, but most of all, those that make the program, and that's the TAP volunteers. Those on staff that I'd like to recognize are Alan Perdomo, Director of Recreation and Park Services. Sonia Batres, Recreation Superintendent. Rosie Lozoya, Recreation Supervisor. Allison Franco, Recreation Coordinator. Patty Santana, Recreation Coordinator. James Pedrosa, Recreation Leader 3. And just to mention that they have presented this program at League of Cities, so it's a well-recognized program throughout the state of California. And after Nicholas presents, we will, he will join council and staff whom I mentioned earlier to take a group photo. Nicholas, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Nicholas Cabesa, and I serve as your Regional Public Affairs Manager at the League of California Cities. The pleasure to be here to honor the city of Norwalk. Each year, CalCities honors cities throughout the state for outstanding and innovative efforts to better serve and respond to the needs in their communities with awards known as the Helen Putnam Award. Helen Putnam was first, was the first female president of the League of California Cities in the mid-1970s. Like many council members, she was a tremendous civic advocate. She was a mayor in Petaluma, supervisor in Sonoma County, schoolteacher, and a principal. She had a reputation for giving her all to each of her endeavors, and likewise, she had a tremendous amount of respect for other city officials who have gave 100%. In her honor and memory, CalCities established the Helen Putnam Award Program in 1982 to recognize the outstanding achievements by California cities. The award recognizes innovative and excellent city programs that make communities better places for their residents, for, to live and work. Honoraries have all made a unique contribution to their community with innovative solutions that improve the quality of life, more efficiently deliver services and programs or needs, and provide a new service that responds to community need. Awards are given in 12 different categories and were announced last month at our annual conference in Long Beach. So super excited to announce that the city of Norwalk received the esteemed 2025 Helen Putnam Award for their Teen Alliance Program, also known as TAP, which really empowers ages 13 to 18 through community service, leadership, and skill building, offering volunteer hours, monthly meetings, and community projects that enhance skills while benefiting the community. I see a lot of TAP participants here, so thank you all for being here. I'm hearing that former TAP participants have gone on to become educators, counselors, city employees, and that's, that's so great. You know, their firsthand experience in the program helps really cultivate that civic-mindedness, well-rounded young adults who often remain engaged both locally and regionally. And just for some additional context about, about the award, there were 200, over 200 applications received in total, and the city of Norwalk outranked 19 applications specifically under the public safety category. The judges were particularly impressed with the internship programs. These programs stood out because they're practical, effective, and rooted on real community need. And in fact, the judges noted that this is something that they could see themselves implementing in their own cities. So special shout out to the city of Norwalk's Recreation and Park Services Department for recognizing the urgent need to develop a program that supports local teens facing academic stress, mental health challenges, and limited after-school opportunities. And we recognized a few staff earlier, so thank you all for being here. The recognition is much deserved, so congratulations and thanks for applying, and we're super excited to be awarding the city of Norwalk this prestigious award, so thank you.
If the Mayor and Council go up front, then we'll have to take a picture. So as they take the picture, I just want to make a few comments. These young individuals that join the TAP program provide assistance at all of our events here at the city of Norwalk, and we really appreciate their contribution, their participation, their smiles, their laughter that they provide to those that visit our And in addition to them being part of the TAP program, we have employees who have been part of the TAP program and are now employees of the city, mid-managers, and have contributed, you know, continued to contribute to the city of Norwalk, so we really appreciate that. They're well-trained, and so when they are hired, their training is minimal and they hit the ground running. So thank you to all of you for volunteering here in the city of Norwalk.
Mayor, can I add a few comments? I was able to attend the conference, the League of Cities in Long Beach. To stand on stage with our city manager and our team, Alan and Rosie, not only was it amazing to be there to accept the award, but TAP has celebrated 30 years in the city of Norwalk, and to know how strongly rooted that program is, is truly amazing. And from when it started and how you have all continued to build upon it, it's remarkable. And we had a booth in the exhibit hall, and it really is an honor to see how many different cities come up to talk about and compliment your team. And that's exactly what they did to Alan, Rosie, Patty, Allison, Sonia. You guys truly represented the city of Norwalk so wonderful at the conference, and I just want to say thank you again for being there.
If I just make one more comment, Mayor? Great program. We've just got to be careful next time. We don't, can't be giving these cities our secrets, you know? They're already modeling our Hope Team, now our Teen Alliance Program, what's next, right? So we need to keep it, we need to keep that circle very tight.
Thank you for that. Next, we have a Veterans Day 2025 video. For those who were not able to attend, they can watch the celebration and the tribute that we had for those who have served our country. And with that, we can play the video.
Every year, Norwalk residents, dignitaries, and veterans come together as a community to honor the brave men and women who have served our nation. The tribute started first at the Senior Center, which hosted its annual Veterans Recognition Ceremony on November 6th to honor the veterans in our community. Joined by Councilmember Rick Ramirez and fellow service members, seniors came together to reflect and to remember and to say thank you.
What an amazing event, right? It's an amazing event that we can celebrate our veterans, young and old, that have served this nation proudly. On behalf of the city of Norwalk, we want to give our appreciation for your service and your dedication to serving this nation, and that we wish you the best of luck and more years to come as we celebrate the veterans of the future.
Then on Veterans Day, the city of Norwalk hosted its annual Veterans Day Remembrance Ceremony, which was an event full of reflection and gratitude. The event featured live tributes, special presentations, and a 21-gun salute.
Ready? Eight, start!
Paying respect to our community's veterans, this year, our keynote speaker was U.S. Marine Corps Sergeant Steven Johnson, a Gulf War veteran who served with courage during both its opening and closing operations. And today, he calls the Norwalk Veterans Villas his home, a place that provides stability and support for veterans in need.
I'm a Gulf War veteran, and I was the first wave there, last wave to come back. I shouldn't be here. By the grace of God, I am, and I'm proud to be a part of this community.
Mayor Tony Ayala shared a heartfelt message emphasizing that our veterans are our friends, family, and neighbors. He acknowledged the challenges many face returning home and reminded the community that supporting veterans is a lasting responsibility.
Welcome to Norwalk's annual Veterans Day Tribute Ceremony. On this Veterans Day, we gather at the 11th month of the 11th day of the 11th hour to honor the men and women who served and currently serve our nation. Thank you all for joining us, and to all those who serve, we appreciate you today and every day. Don't forget that. Thank you.
We extend our deepest gratitude to every veteran who has answered the call to serve, and to every family who has stood beside them, and to our community who joined us in remembrance and thanks. Thank you for showing that Norwalk stands united in appreciation, support, and respect. Norwalk stands beside its veterans every step of the way.
Thank you for your service, veterans.
Thank you for your service, veterans.
Thank you for your service and dedication to our great country.
A great tribute to our veterans, for sure. Next, we have the Weingart Rose Video to share with the community, another great project collaboration with other governmental entities, including the county and ourselves, the city of Norwalk, with project-based vouchers. With that, we can play the video.
In Norwalk, we believe that everyone deserves a safe place to call home. That belief is what helped transform the former Motel 6 on Rosecrans into the Weingart Rose. Thanks to California's Project Home Key Initiative, it is now a permanent supportive housing community that provides stability and a fresh start for individuals who have experienced homelessness. For some individuals, their new chapter began with sign-in day. For each person stepping inside, this was more than paperwork, it was the first step towards stability, healing, and hope.
I was in a domestic violence relationship. I had a protection order on me, and going through a domestic violence relationship and fleeing, you know, it was really hard on my mental health, and it started from there. And then I do have autoimmune diseases, and that also was, took part in me experiencing homelessness.
Starting in September, new residents moved into one of the 54 fully furnished studio units they can now call home. The selection of tenants were carefully selected through the Norwalk Housing Authority in partnership with the Weingart Property Management.
Home is where you dwell, where you feel safe, and where you feel your freedom. That's home to me.
The safety and the security of being able to get a good night's sleep feels like home.
Somewhere safe, and that's how it feels like walking in right now. Like, I got overwhelmed, you know, because it does feel safe. Like, I can walk in and nothing, I don't have to look over my shoulder or worry about someone next to me. It's like I have my own space, and that's home.
Weingart Rose offers more than just housing. It provides a supportive community for its residents. With onsite mental health care, recovery support, employment assistance, and case management, residents have the resources they need to rebuild their lives. The facility includes a dog park and shared spaces designed to promote connection and stability. It is a safe environment where community can come together. On October 30th, the city of Norwalk joined the Weingart Center and Supervisor Janice Hahn to celebrate the official opening of the Weingart Rose.
The Weingart Rose represents the heart of Weingart Center's mission to end homelessness through permanent supportive housing. The mission is also shared by the city of Norwalk, the county, and the state. Homelessness is not the last stop for people. For Norwalk and our community here as partners, we are opening doors to another chance for individuals and families to build a stronger and brighter future.
The Weingart Rose isn't just a building, it's a beginning, a space for healing, for rebuilding, and for hope. Welcome home, neighbors. Welcome home to Norwalk.
Another great project to assist those that are in need and homeless and give them a stable, stable place here in the city of Norwalk. Next, we have our bi-weekly video that kind of puts everything together and shows how busy and fun Parks and Recreation staff and all the other staff are here in Norwalk. With that, play the video.
The Norwalk Chamber held a Paint the Town Pink wrap-up event on November 5th to celebrate the month-long campaign supporting breast cancer awareness. The community gathered at Starbucks on Firestone to recognize their efforts in the fight against breast cancer. On November 6th, Social Services Center held the Fall Harvest Festival Event. The participants enjoyed carnival games and made crafts of flowers and colorful bags. On November 12th, the city of Norwalk Executive Team volunteered and brought a bit of Vegas to residents at the Norwalk Skilled Nursing and Wellness Center.
We are here at the Norwalk Skilled Nursing and Wellness Center. We want to make sure that we can provide them with some laughter, some excitement, and make their day just a little brighter. From the executive team to here, we are connecting the community in a much deeper way.
It seems to be a very exciting event here for the patients here, so this is a very exciting situation for you guys to bring this to them and to be assistance. I want to thank them for coming out today and experiencing this with Norwalk's Skilled Nursing Center and to keep up the good work. There's, there's many facilities and many locations that need this kind of service and to help keep these kind of places motivated. We thank them for that.
The city of Norwalk, in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, recently welcomed several new businesses to the city. On November 6th, OUO Pickup Cover opened its doors, followed by the Dreamcatcher Community Resource Center on November 13th, Santa Elena Pharmacy 2 on November 14th, and Nothing Bunt Cakes on November 15th. Thank you to all those who attended these ribbon cuttings and helped welcome these new businesses to our city.
Busy couple of weeks here in the city of Norwalk. Next, I'd like to also provide just a quick update as to what we have been hearing from our community. And tonight, I'd like to update the City Council on the efforts to keep Norwalk community safe and support families affected by recent ICE activities since our last City Council meeting. As you know, the city continues to keep our residents safe and informed by providing legal support, counseling, and community outreach activities. We also have educational seminars, two that are upcoming by Legal Aid in Chitla, November 25th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. at Social Services Center. We have one, and then December 9th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. at the Senior Center. We also have food pantry resources. Since November 1st, the Social Services Department has assisted over 150 families through the city's emergency food pantry program. Of those families, 57% have been affected by reductions in CalFresh and SNAP benefits, which has resulted in a 22% increase in demand for food assistance in Norwalk. And this pantry is ongoing. It's been with the Social Services Department for many, many years. Also, the social services, the social workers assess recipients, providing them with food support and connecting them to additional resources and case management. providing them with food support and connecting them to additional resources and case management for comprehensive assistance beyond immediate relief. And we are, as I mentioned last time, we are tracking calls in relation to ICE, walk-ins, referrals to Legal Aid, hotline messages, social services, calls that they handle, and then calls received by Public Safety. And they have been very, very minimal, and we're tracking those on a daily basis. This update highlights the city's commitment to help those families impacted not just by ICE enforcement activity, but homelessness as well. We continue to fund the investment for Legal Aid services. We have spent to date over $20,000, and it continues to be funded. So if there's any need, we have the funding to continue to assist residents. And I also want to thank the community for supporting those that have been affected by ICE raids throughout our community. There are families that come together to help those that have been affected, that have been detained. And so I want to thank them personally because it is a tremendous, tremendous sadness what is happening here in our city and throughout the nation. And those community members that come out and help, thank you in advance. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's worth emphasizing that all the services you just talked about are services that have been provided for years. There has been no, there has been no additional budget allocation. It's been something we've always done. I know we've assisted with immigration issues through legal services for the last 50 years I know of. And so it's like, it wasn't one of these kinds of things where there was an issue in the community and we threw a bunch of money at it for the very first time. These are services that we provided over time. It will continue to provide. And that, because that's what we do here. You know, this council doesn't wait around for a problem to happen. Council has insight, foresight. They head it off ahead of time. That's the difference between Norwalk and everybody else out there. Okay, consent counter. There are six items for consideration, Mr. Voight. Are there any persons wishing to speak on the consent counter items?
I do not have any speaker cards for the consent counter.
Okay, thank you.
Move the items.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Ramirez...
Aye.
Rios...
Aye.
Valencia...
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez...
Aye.
And Mayor Ayala.
Aye. Does anybody have any appointments to advisory bodies this evening? Okay. We'll move on to item eight. Item eight, now is the time for a public hearing to consider ordinance number 25-1761 adopting the 2025 California Building Residential Fire Wildland Urban Interface Plumbing, Electrical, Mechanical, Energy, Existing Building, and Green Building Standards and Amendments, and resolution number 25-53 modifying the California standard codes due to local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions, amending the Norwalk Municipal Code. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Voight, please provide the notice and report.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. Notice of the public hearing was posted on November 7th at the city's three official posting sites, as well as our website. It was also published on 10/31 and 11/7 in the city's adjudicated newspaper, and I've received no communications.
Thank you. Let's have a staff report.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. Mr. Alex Hamilton will present.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Council. You received a detailed presentation on this material by our building official on November 4th, so I won't repeat that. It was a detailed presentation regarding the next code cycle that is set for adoption tonight that will go into effect January 1st of 2026. We provided a presentation and introduced for first reading by title only ordinance number 25-1761 amending various chapters of Section 15 of the Norwalk Municipal Code. The public hearing notice was set for tonight, November 18th, 2025, and the notice of public hearing was posted at the city's three designated posting places and the city's website on November 7th, 2025, and published in the Norwalk Patriot on October 31st and November 7th of 2025. Basically, as was mentioned at the last council meeting when this was presented in detail, we have noticed at the public counter and informed patrons at our building and safety counter of the changes that are coming in January. Most of the design professionals and engineers and whatnot that are familiar with the industry are already prepared for the changes. So the ordinance number 25-1761, as I said, would be effective 30 days from the date of adoption, which would be January 1st of 2026. And as I indicated, we've also published notices on our website and at the counter to inform staff and the general public of these changes to the code. At this time this evening, staff recommends that the city council adopt ordinance number 25-1761, an ordinance of the city of Norwalk adopting or reference the 2025 additions of the California Building Residential Fire Wildland Urban Interface Plumbing, Electrical, Mechanical, Engineering, Energy, Existing Building, and Green Building Standard Codes and related model codes with appendices and amendments thereto and amending the Norwalk Municipal Code, and adopting resolution number 25-53, a resolution of the city council of the city of Norwalk making express findings and determinations that modifications to the California Building Residential Fire Wildland Urban Interface Plumbing, Electrical, Mechanical, Existing Building, and Green Building Standard Codes and ordinance 25-1761 are reasonably necessary because of local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. This concludes my presentation for this evening. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions should you have them.
Okay, I don't have any cards up here, but I want to ask the audience, is there anybody here wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none of my closed public hearing. Comments? Comments, council? Questions?
There's no questions. I'll move the item.
Second.
Hey, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Ramirez...
Aye.
Rios...
Aye.
Valencia...
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez...
Aye.
And Mayor Ayala.
Aye. Item nine, now is the time for a public hearing to consider ordinance number 25-1762, zoning text amendment number 2025-01, amending Title 17 zoning of the Norwalk Municipal Code, updating the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and various other sections relating to residential zoning. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Voight, can you provide the notice and report?
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. Notice of the item was posted on the city's three official sites and our website on October 24th. It was also published in the city's adjudicated newspaper on the same date. We received one communication, which was also sent to each of you, from James Lloyd of the California Housing Defense Field Fund, sorry, requesting some changes. As he said, that there's some conflicts with the California State Code and the proposed ordinance.
Thank you. Can I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. Ms. Nancy Lee will present.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council and members of the community. The item before you is ordinance number 25-1762 as it relates to zoning text amendments pertaining to development standards for accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, and residential zoning code development standards. The purpose of the zoning text amendments is to update any obsolete development standards, comply with state laws, and to clarify any ambiguous requirements. Specifically, staff is recommending amendments to Chapter 17.04.205 regarding accessory buildings and structures, 17.04.210 for ADUs and junior ADUs, and to amend Chapter 1705 of the residential zones. For background, the Norwalk Municipal Code was last updated in 2018 to include ADU development standards. However, with continued changes in state ADU laws, the municipal code is out of compliance. So planning staff has been applying the standards established under state law for review of ADUs and junior ADUs. Furthermore, the city's most current housing element list program, 1.4, as ADUs as a housing program, which requires the city to update the ADU development standards to comply with the housing element. The proposed ADU development standards reflects input received from Planning Commission and City Council during study sessions that were previously held. The amendments will align the city's regulation with state requirements. The proposed zoning text amendments will establish definitions governing ADUs and junior ADUs, allow for ADUs on lots with a single-family residence, expand ADU uses to multifamily dwellings, and update various portions of the ADU standards that are inconsistent with state laws. These changes include, but are not limited to, the number of ADUs and JADUs allowed, building height, off-street parking, and design standards. As previously mentioned, the amendment establishes JADU uses on lots with a single-family residence and expands ADU uses in multifamily lots. These changes are in part created pursuant to Government Code Section 66323. These ADUs and JADUs are created and also referred to as state-manded or state-exempt ADUs. The first type of exempt ADUs are single-family converted ADUs. One ADU per lot is permitted within the converted space of a proposed or existing single-family dwelling or accessory structure. This type of ADU must have exterior access and setbacks for fire and safety, but is not subject to the four-foot side and rear yard setback. ADUs from conversions are limited in size. So it's limited to the size of the existing space. An additional 150 square foot expansion may be allowed if it's needed to accommodate ingress and egress. One junior ADU per lot is also permitted within the proposed or existing space of a single-family dwelling. For the purposes of constructing a JADU, attached garages are considered to be part of the single-family dwelling. The JADU has a size limit of 500 square feet and is subject to owner occupancy requirements. The second type of exempt ADU is a single-family detached ADU. One new construction detached ADU with the maximum of four-foot side and rear setbacks is permitted on lots with single-family dwellings. The maximum unit size is 800 square feet with height limitations of 16, 18, or 20 feet depending on the height requirements for that site. The third and fourth type of exempt ADUs are ADUs for multifamily properties. They can be converted and also detached. In multifamily attached ADUs, the ADUs may be created within the existing portions of multifamily structures that are not used as livable space. There's a minimum of one ADU allowed within the existing family dwelling, and up to 25% of the existing multifamily dwellings are allowed. So up to eight, for an eight-unit dwelling, two attached ADUs are allowed. For detached ADUs on multifamily properties, up to two detached ADUs are allowed, or up to eight detached ADUs are allowed on a lot with an existing multifamily dwelling. These numbers are not to exceed the number of units on the lot. And they're also subject to the four-foot side yard, for the side and rear yard setbacks with height limits of 16, 18, or 20 feet. ADUs that are not created pursuant to the exempt units as defined by the state are known as not exempt ADUs. They can vary between new construction attached ADUs, new construction detached ADUs, and range between 801 to 1,000 square feet. They may not be combined with any other ADUs, but can be created with a JADU and a single-family residence. These ADUs are subject to development standards not including, are subject to development standards including lot coverage, floor area ratio, open space, front setbacks, and design standards. The maximum unit size for a non-exempt ADU that staff is recommending is 1,000 square feet. These are just some examples on the screen of detached or detached, non-exempt ADUs. Currently, staff reviews ADU plans using the state's minimum height requirements, which are 16 feet for a detached ADU, 18 feet for a detached ADU within the single-family residential, multifamily residential zones that are within a half-mile walking distance of a major transit stop or a high-quality transit corridor. An additional two feet may be proposed to accommodate a roof pitch to align with the primary dwelling unit. 18 feet maximum height is allowed for detached ADUs for multifamily residential properties. And 25 feet are the height limitation in the underlying zone for an attached ADU, whichever is less is also allowed. I would also like to note that during the Planning Commission meeting, the commission did receive a comment from a public speaker asking that the city allow ADUs to exceed these height requirements. In the proposed development standards, additional height requirements are included to minimize privacy concerns and promote our compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. The additional requirements include: Not exempt detached ADU shall not exceed one-story in height. A new construction ADU shall not be permitted above a detached garage or carport. Plate height shall be limited to eight feet per story. Multifamily dwellings proposing conversions may request additional height if the applicant demonstrates good faith effort in preserving such amenities, parking. In the draft ADU ordinance, there are also standards that address privacy impact. Window placement shall not have a direct line of sight into adjacent windows and doors. Second-story upper decks and/or balconies are prohibited. New windows when setback less than four feet are prohibited unless required by the building code. As for parking, one parking stall is required unless the ADU is a junior ADU within a half-mile walking distance of a public transit stop, within part of the proposed or existing primary residence, within an architecturally or historically significant district, when the on-street parking permits are required but not offered to the occupant of the ADU, when there is a car-share service within one block of the ADU. Additional standards recommended by staff include the property owner making a good-faith effort to inform tenants of their intent to convert a portion of the project's amenities, such as parking or laundry facilities, into units. And this would be reviewed by the Director of Community Development. So in addition to the ADU development standard, staff is proposing code amendments to delete a duplicate ADU definition, to provide revised definitions and provide illustrations for floor area ratio, building height, and lot coverage, and add a definition for top plate height. These are some illustrations that are included in the draft ordinance as it pertains to floor area ratio, building height, and lot coverage. in the draft ordinance, um, as it pertains to a floor area ratio, building height, and lot coverage. Staff is also recommending a new chapter to address development standards for accessory buildings and structures. Um, so these standards would address height, floor area, lot coverage, setbacks, design, and plumbing within accessory buildings. Um, the reason for this is that, is because the current zoning code lacks clarity and specific standards regulating such accessory buildings and structures in residential. So, in this example, um, for an accessory building such as a new garage, uh, proposed within a single-family residence, a setback of the garage would be four feet from the side and rear, a distance between, of five feet, eve, measured from eve to eve between the new accessory building and the single-family dwelling. And, um, it would also be subject to lot coverage, uh, requirements. Uh, the new garage would be, uh, the maximum allowable size for the new garage would be 800 square feet, and the maximum height is, would be 16 feet. Um, in additional, uh, code amendments include, um, adding specifically accessory buildings and structures at, as permitted uses, uh, revising the height requirements and adding a top plate height requirement, modifying yard setback requirements and add second-story yard and distance between structure requirements, add lot coverage and floor area ratio requirements, add standards to improve design of residential dwellings and laundry facility requirements, and within the R3 and R4 zone, add standards to enhance the appearance of trash enclosures and delete accessible unit requirements. Um, so, uh, the ADU ordinance will ensure, uh, compliance with the state laws and promote efficient application processing. Um, zoning code amendments, uh, would, uh, aim to clarify ambiguous requirements and to make, uh, these standards consistent with city's current uses, practices, and development patterns, ensure proper separation of buildings, and enhance neighborhood compatibility. It also aims to minimize, uh, health, safety, and privacy concerns. At the October 22nd, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, um, as I mentioned earlier, we did get a, uh, Planning Commission did receive a request that ADUs be allowed to exceed the maximum allowable height restriction. Um, some of the commissioners' comments included, um, ADU development standards should adhere to the new state regulations, and, uh, planning commissioners expressed concerns about setbacks. Um, they voted, uh, Planning Commission voted 5-0 to adopt, um, to adopt Resolution Number 25-14, which recommended City Council approve, um, the zoning text. Um, and as, um, mentioned earlier, um, we did receive, uh, a comment letter today from, um, from a nonprofit, uh, organization, um, uh, prior to this meeting. Um, so staff does recommend that the City Council approve, um, the categorical exemption and introduce, um, Ordinance Number 251762. Um, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone wishing to speak on this item?
It's just members of the public, initially. And there are no members. Mr. Mayor, I do want to note that the, uh, letter that was referenced, we will enter that into the record, so it's part of tonight's, uh, public hearing. And then with that, uh, it'd be appropriate to close the public hearing and bring you back up to the City Council level.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Comments, questions, council? Mr. Ramirez?
Yeah, thank you. Um, the question I have, you, you had mentioned that there's been a request to exceed the height requirements. How many of those have we received? Do you know?
One request.
And the reasoning behind that request?
Um, and it's my understanding in that situation, uh, that individual would like to build a second-story ADU over the existing garage, and it would be higher than the 16 feet that's allowed by the state.
I do recall there was an applicant a while back, and I think Mr. Hamilton and I were working on this case where, um, they, they wanted to exceed the height requirement because of the pitch of the roof wanted to match the res, the, the, the primary residence. And the reason we, we allowed it was because the ADU butted up against an alley that there wasn't a privacy issue. So, are we taking these case by case?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Ramirez, we, we would take those on a case-by-case basis. And to your point, uh, we always take that into account if there are extenuating circumstances. What we're trying to avoid, or what we call the, the two-story AD, either the two-story ADUs or an ADU built on top of a detached garage. So, we're, we're trying to minimize that as much as possible because we do, we are aware of neighbor concerns as it relates to privacy and scale enassing. But in the case of the roof pitch, certainly it's something we would look at on a case-by-case.
Thank you. No further question.
Council, any other questions?
Yes, Mayor, I have a few. Um, thank you for the presentation. Um, there's been several housing, um, bills that have come throughout the state that, um, as part of a legislative body, um, Contract Cities, the League of Cities, et cetera, we have denied, and we are, we have opposed based on the elements of local control. Um, while I do appreciate some of the changes that have been made to some of the, the bills and the structures of the ADUs, it does not work everywhere. Um, I have seen very successful ADUs here in the city of Norwalk. I've seen very unsuccessful ADUs in the city of Norwalk. Because of these bills, we cannot regulate parking. It takes, it takes added pressure onto our infrastructure, onto our streets, onto our sewers, onto our water flow, onto our public safety. And none of that is given to the city to say, hey, we are asking you to do this, and we're going to provide assistance to make that happen. Um, so I, I have a very, very hard time when it comes to things like this. I understand and appreciate that we are updating our municipal code to align with what we do have control over. Um, and I, I really appreciate the staff in applying the knowledge that you all have to advise our residents on what will work and what is allowable. Um, continue to fight back with the state if you can when it comes to these instances and these bills that are, um, mandating things in our city. Um, because it's really, we, we know, we know what parking challenges we have. And you can turn around and put an ADU in every single lot, and we're gonna have triple the parking challenges. Um, so, while I understand this is more of a statement, I apologize, Mayor, um, it's just very hard to understand and, and to really advise our residents what we can do and what is being allowed to do without taking in control, the living situation in Norwalk. So, I appreciate you updating everything. Um, I have the same concerns the Planning Commission does, um, especially when it comes to requirements for parking, um, in a very populated city. Um, but understand that there's really nothing we can do to, to change it.
If I may just add, Mr. Mayor, one more question and a comment. And I know this is gonna help us when we update our municipal code. And, and as Vice Mayor Jennifer mentioned, um, that she's seen some successful and unsuccessful ADUs. I myself have also seen those, and I also have seen probably those ADUs that have not been permitted, and they have not gone through the process. You know, there are some ADUs that don't, that didn't meet those setback requirements, um, as well as the eve-to-eve. And I went into those along the San Gabriel River Corridor area, where the lots were a lot bigger, where they have the, the so-called animals, but they've also have stables plus ADUs. And, um, so is this gonna help us with enforcement? Because I think that's key, and what happens to those ADUs that have been, been built illegally outside this municipal code?
So, um, Councilmember Ramirez, we would respond to complaints about unpermitted construction on a case-by-case basis. Those zones that you're talking about are the horse overlay zone properties that happen to be deeper. Um, at this point in time, there's a number of other issues associated with the H overlay, as I like to call it. Uh, we've allowed eight, uh, ADUs back there prior to my tenure where they've encroached into the required open space for the keeping of horses. So, there's a whole lot of things that we need to look at in that, the H overlay zone. But we do actively enforce, um, complaints about un, unpermitted construction.
Alex, how many, uh, completed legal ADUs do we have in the city currently?
Mayor, I believe Nancy has some of those statistics.
I'm not talking about applications, I'm talking purely about ones that are completed.
Um, so I have, what I have is, um, the number of permits issued for ADUs between 2022 to present. And the number I have is 320.
320?
323, yes.
323.
So, Mayor, if, if I may to your question, we anticipated this would come up. So, when you think about that, even if that represented, say, not all of them falling through on the work, you're, you're still looking at probably 250 to 300 units that got added to the city's housing stock. To the Vice Mayor's point, without any study for infrastructure, for parking, for sewer, for water, for capacity, I do believe at some point, as I said before during the study session, we're gonna reach a critical mass, I think a lot of cities are, where they're literally gonna run into infrastructure capacity issues as a result of that.
You know, especially because our infrastructure is, uh, 1940s, 50s vintage. You know, it's not infrastructure from 10 years ago, 20 years ago. Uh, council, who else had a question? Oh, go ahead, Margaret.
So, uh, when we talk about the allowable square footage of an ADU, I'm just trying to picture just, I guess, the size and fit and how it all, um, how it all pertains to that particular piece of property in terms of overall square footage. So, I don't know if there's a, a number, um, that you can share. Like, for example, is there a minimum square footage that that property has to have? Like, for example, 5,000 square feet? Let's say your, let's say your property overall is 5,000 square feet, and your home is 1,300 square. What is looked at in terms of, um, the different allowable ADUs? Well, my first question, let, I'll just, let's start there. Is there a minimum square footage property size, property-wise?
Um, unfortunately, um, there is not. Um, I know in, uh, many jurisdictions, uh, previously used to have a minimum lot size requirement for, uh, constructing an ADU. But with the passage of, uh, the state mandates, cities are not allowed to, uh, have a minimum lot size requirement.
Okay, so we're not allowed to do that. Okay, so basically then, the guide is the four-feet setback?
Yes, uh, so for example, an exempt ADU, uh, would be required to be set back four feet from the side property line and from the rear property.
Okay, all right. And no specific, uh, distance from the primary residence?
Um, with the standards that we've drafted, the distance will be five feet required, uh, measured from eve to eve.
Okay, all right. Um, have you seen any instances where an ADU is placed or proposed, um, in front of the primary residence? You know, some, some properties, the house may be kind of set back. So, have you seen that? Is that, what can you tell me about that?
Um, I, since I've been here, I don't think I've seen that specifically.
Um, so, uh, Councilmember Rios, I, I personally haven't seen it. Uh, but as I touched on during the study session, it is something that we're looking at carefully in anticipation that eventually there'll, there will be a request made. But what I'd like to do is work with public services and engineering to come up with a line-of-sight standard that we could apply. We, the state says we can't prohibit them in the front yard setback. But what we can do is have an objective standard that says you can't place them in the front yard in such a way that they become a hazard to, to passing traffic or pedestrians. So, that's something we definitely want to look at.
Okay, and, and that's why I ask, because, I mean, people are getting creative, you know? Construction, um, you know, businesses are getting creative. So, I just want to make sure that, that's something that's being, you know, thought of, um, as, as potential, you know, someone may propose just that. And the other thing, um, I've actually gotten a few concerns regarding, from, um, residents who are in the process of, or have finally been permitted, the go-ahead for their ADU. And I don't really think it's so much, um, a part of the, the city or community development, the issue there. I, I think that, and this is my thought, is, you know, um, construction companies kind of offer them the moon and the stars. And then they realize, uh, no, we can't do that. And then it's like, well, the city put me through, you know, had to jump all these hoops. You know, I had to go through all this, you know, nonsense just to get a permit. And so I'd rather avoid that, and I'm, I'm wondering how we can do that. So, I'm suggesting, is there something that, maybe it already exists, I don't know, but something that can be offered, um, initially to that, uh, architect or that construction firm or that resident that tells you, these are the do's and the don'ts? That way, they can't come back and say, well, the city, you know, put me through all kinds of nonsense just to, but no. Now, maybe your construction firm, oh, told you you can do all of this, but you really can't. So, do we have something like that, or are you guys thinking about?
Yeah, yes, yes, Councilmember, uh, we have process improvements in place already. Um, with the adoption of this ordinance, uh, we'll be preparing, we do have handouts. And I'm a real big believer in handouts and illustrations to show the, and demonstrate the point. But we're always looking to, uh, better our process. One of the things that we've done, um, is to do better coordination between the departments. Uh, one of many examples I can give you is that there was an ADU application that came in, and we try to inform the property owner, um, is early on in the process of any potential conflicts, so that they're better informed, because oftentimes what they get from the contractor or the designer is not the whole, the whole story. So, what we're trying to do is, is make sure they understand as well. We had one application that came in that, that the drafts person or architect was from the Bay Area, and they just made a gross assumption about where the sewer easement was, and they went ahead and plotted that on the plan. Turns out the sewer easement wasn't in the front, it was in the back, as is typical in the city of Norwalk. That's one of many examples where the homeowner may not even be aware, and they're informed by the architect or designer, and they're designing from 400 miles away without any knowledge of local conditions. So, we've come a long ways, we can still do a better job of informing the, our residents about what they need to be aware of before they even sign that contract. Because by the time they sign the contract, they've spent substantial sums of money and are relying on the designer or architect in good faith to, to frankly be truthful about what they're putting on the plans.
Exactly.
And I do want to thank the city departments that we've been able to work with. Uh, the agencies have been fantastic, Athens is great. We're looping them in now because that's another one of those infrastructure issues that's right around the corner for us with the, the different, uh, composting and recycling requirements. Um, Edison has been tremendous, as has the gas company, our water department, or the other water agencies. And engineering has been fantastic, we've had multiple meetings with them to better collaborate and make sure that all the information is available to the applicant upfront. But again, that's a process improvement that's in place.
Okay, yeah, no, um, thank you for that. I think that, uh, that with everything that we, we know, everything that you know, and everything that's, you know, on the forefront, um, I think that we're in a good position to go ahead and, and do some good, you know, education and, and raise awareness, and if they're considering an ADU, these are the things that you should know. So, they don't come back and say it was a community development department's, you know, gave them a headache. No, you, you know, that we offer you ways to actually inform yourself on what you can and can't do.
Understand, and, and lastly, I would like to mention one of the standards tonight, or two of the standards tonight that are proposed are floor area ratios. As the city attorney indicated, we're going to evaluate that, and we'll come back with a report to you as to whether we can or can't. We believe that we can, because those are objective standards that should apply. But again, we'll evaluate that. We are proposing that tonight as a way of addressing some of the issues that you pointed out as it relates to the number of structures on a lot. Not just in Norwalk, I've seen some cities that, between a J-ADU and an ADU and a regular addition to their house, they're approaching 90% lot coverage, and that's a huge impact. And that's not in, just in Norwalk, that's in other cities as well. So we're doing what we can with the standards, realizing the state is also shackling us, for lack of a better term, on what we can and can't.
What I can share is that those residents that have reached out are actually families that have lived here for many, many years, and now, you know, they have their adult children and maybe their families who, so I mean, it's their family, and they're very aware and conscious of, you know, making sure that they're within all guidelines and rules and laws, and it's, you know, a way for them to be with family, you know, and so I think it's, you know, good for them, you know, I just want to make sure that, of course, they stay within, they're aware of what the laws are, our ordinances.
Understood.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't remember if this information was given or not, but I seem to have heard it somewhere. You did mention that there were lots of already, you know, ADUs that weren't done appropriately or legally or what have you, but my question is, are we working with people who, or have people applied to make what they currently have up to code? And are those 323 including some of them? Or do we have any other data for that?
Nancy?
Yes. I know in general, we do receive applications in the planning division to what's called legalize, legalize a garage conversion.
Okay.
Or to legalize, you know, unpermitted structure as an ADU. So we definitely see those types of applications where folks are trying to obtain permits. But in those situations, whatever relevant standards are applicable that we can apply, we would provide those corrections or comments to them at the time they submit their plans.
You provide the corrections that need to happen?
Yeah, if it's not compliant with the standards from the state.
Okay. But there is such a thing that people are doing, coming in to apply for this?
Correct, yes.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay, and you're working with them. Thank you.
Mayor, I have one request. While we talk about how much we are concerned about ADUs, SB 9 is completely worse, because you can take an entire single-family property, subdivide it in half, and actually put four units on there. So that completely, and they're units, they're, they're units, no easement, like yards, no concern with parking, nothing, which is, in my opinion, 10 times worse than what we're talking about for ADUs. So Alex, if you could, in a Friday memo, Jesus, just give us an update. I don't need a report at a council meeting, but an update of how many applications have come in under the SB 9 guidelines? Have they been successful? What are we working on, et cetera? Because that's, you're really looking at one address, at one property being turned into up to four addresses. And everything that we just talked about, the concerns that we have with ADUs, SB 9 is completely worse.
Vice Mayor, thank you. I'll give the city manager a report. We are working on an ordinance for SB 9 to codify some standards for that. To your point, it is, it's very frightening when you think about it, I don't want to overstate it, but it's literally allowing somebody to subdivide their lot into multiple other lots with, as separate legal addresses, separate legal lots that can be sold or conveyed. And that raises a whole host of issues from ingress and egress, and what rights they have to cross over one lot to get to another. We are developing some standards that we'll be presenting to the Planning Commission and you, the City Council, in the near future, but I will get you an update.
Well, lastly, I would say that I want to make sure that Rita is looped into these things, because I can tell you one thing, through my history in Norwalk, back from when I worked here in like in 86, is that when you track over time, safety issues in neighborhoods, and you get density with scarcity of parking in the same area, then you start to get neighbor-on-neighbor issues that are very difficult to resolve, very difficult to resolve. So I understand the whole infrastructure part of it and all that other stuff, but we, what we got to be aware of also is how are our people going to be able to police this when parking does become scarce? And you know, all the normal kinds of things that happen when you have very high density somewhere, just like around town where we have highly dense apartments. Those have always been a source of issue for us in town, so, like I said, let's just make sure that everybody's communicating. We don't treat this like purely an infrastructure issue, or a zoning issue, or, you know, let's look at it in its entirety.
Thank you, Mayor, and that's a point well taken. I, I can think of one street in particular, I won't mention that street, but it's, it's been generational for the, for the city of Norwalk, from the time I used to work here too. So you're right, those problems are longstanding, and they don't always get better with time, so your point's well taken on that. One of the items that Nancy had touched on is, we're finding, on limited basis, that apartment buildings are, you know, they're taking out amenities, project amenities, to convert them to ADUs. And the state law says they can do that, and says we can't do anything about it. One of the things we are asking, though, is that that landlord have the responsibility to inform the tenants of those apartments that that's what they're planning on doing. Because if I'm a tenant in an apartment, and all of a sudden my laundry room is gone and converted into an ADU, I think as a tenant, I would have the right, or should have the right, to know that. So it's, it's not going to solve the problem, but it's, to your point about communication.
No, I get it, I'm just saying is that, you know, if we have state mandates and we can't avoid doing it and all that other stuff, if I'm coming from the public safety side, what I'd be thinking is, okay, if all this other stuff is baked in, and what's baked in creates a problem, how do I plan to make sure there's not an insurrection because it's so dense and there's no parking? Because that's really not something you can think about a week before the construction's completed. Let's just make sure, let's just make sure that we're talking. Do we have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios. I'm sorry, Valencia.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
And Mariela.
Aye.
Okay, now we have item number 10. Time for a public hearing to consider resolution number 25-54, upholding the Planning Commission's decision to adopt the recirculated initial study mitigated negative declaration, State Clearinghouse number 20241066, and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, and approved precise development plan number 2023-06 at 14830, Carmonita Road. The public hearing is now open. Ms. DeVoie, please provide the notice and report.
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council noted that the item was mailed to 59 property owners within a 500-foot radius of the subject site. It was also posted on the city's three official posting sites and the website on November 7th, as well as published in the city's adjudicated newspaper on the same date. We received one communication that was also shared with all of the council members, from Alora McGwire, from the law firm of Adams, Broadwell, Joseph, and Dosa, which is the firm appealing the item tonight, and they are in opposition to the item.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Alex Hamilton will present.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, the item before you tonight is an appeal of PDP number 23-06, which is a request by the applicant to demolish two existing warehouse buildings totaling 89,870 square feet to construct a new 138,972 approximately square-foot industrial warehouse building and associated improvements on a seven-acre lot. On October 8th, 2025, the Planning Commission unanimously adopted the mitigated negative declaration with the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan contained therein, and adopted resolution number 2513 approving precise development plan number, PDP number 2023-06. At that meeting, Creed LA spoke in opposition to the project, I believe they're here tonight as well, and as City Clerk mentioned, has provided a letter at approximately 5:40 this afternoon, which will, the applicant will be able to address later. Also, at the Planning Commission meeting was the laborers' local 1309, known as Lyuna, they spoke in favor of the project. This is the vicinity map and aerial of the project, it's located just west of Carmonita Road in the heavy industrial zone north of Excelsior. The PDP 2306, here's a site plan of the proposed new state-of-the-art warehouse building that was proposed, or is proposed, by the applicant, Rexford Industrial. I might want to add that Rexford is a major industrial developer, active throughout the state of California. They're known to build and hold, but what they build, they have a vested stake in maintaining, and that has a lot of good benefits to the community. So the proposed project, as I mentioned, was an approximately 138,972 square-foot warehouse, of which 132,000 would be warehouse space, approximately 3,700 would be ground floor office space, and another 3,000 square feet of mezzanine office space. The building is to provide 141 parking spaces and 22 loading dock doors, along with eight short-term bicycle parking spaces. As you can see in the site plan, the loading dock doors are all facing the south. This represents the new state-of-the-art design that is proposed by the applicant. In addition to it, the site improvements are designed in such a way to make sure that truck ingress and egress to and from the site are safely and adequately maintained and contained on the site. There are some elevations of the proposed new warehouse building, you'll see that there's attention to detail, as much as is possible for a tilt-up warehouse building. You have color variations, banding, you have the use of glass and metal, eyebrows pieces, and various materials that are used to heighten the visual impact or visual benefit of the appearance of the building. This is the other two elevations. This elevation on the top side is the dock side elevation, which would not really, because of its location, would not be very visible from Excelsior. So as was mentioned, on October 17th, Creed LA filed an appeal of this action. They appealed the Planning Commission's October 8th, 2025, adoption of a recirculated mitigated negative declaration, MND, State Clearinghouse number 20241066, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, and appealed the adoption of resolution 2513 approving precise development plan, PDP number 232306, with conditions of approval and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. At the time, the grounds, the grounds for the appeal by Creed was that the city had not complied with applicable SEQA land use, and SEQA and land use laws. The Planning Commission per Creed abused its discretion and proceeded in a manner inconsistent with law and without substantial evidence to support the approved findings by approving the project in reliance on a deficient mitigated negative declaration, which fails to disclose and mitigate the project's potentially significant impacts. Creed LA and their expert consultants submitted written comments to the city on the original mitigated negative declaration, providing substantial evidence supporting a fair argument that the project may result in significant unmitigated air quality, public health, transportation, energy, and public utility impacts, and that these issues were not resolved in the recirculated mitigated mitigation monitoring and reporting program and the mitigated negative declaration approved by the Planning Commission. That's what was the basis of the grounds for the appeal. In response to the grounds for Creed's appeal, on November 4th, the following response was provided by the applicant's technical expert EPD Solutions, stating that none of the comments provided a fair argument that the project will have a significant environmental effect, which would require preparation of an environmental impact report. None of the information in the letters or responses constitute the type of significant new information that requires recirculation of the 14830 Carmonita Road Warehouse Project Public Review Draft ISMND for further public review, under SEQA Guidelines Section 1507.3.5, recirculation of a mitigated negative declaration prior to adoption. In other words, this was stating that there was no new evidence provided in the Creed's response, or their appeal. None of this new material indicates that the project will result in a significant new environmental impact, not previously disclosed in the Carmonita Road Warehouse Public Review Draft ISMND, and that in addition, none of the information indicates that there would be a substantial increase in the severity of a previously identified environmental impact that will not be mitigated, or that will not be of any other circum, or would be of any other circumstances regarding requiring recirculation described in State SEQA Guidelines Section 150373.5. At this time, staff does recommend, and consistent with the Planning Commission's recommendation, that the City Council adopt resolution number 25454, a resolution of the City Council, the city of Norwalk, setting forth its findings of fact and decision of upholding the Planning Commission's decision to adopt the recirculated initial study/mitigated negative declaration, State Clearinghouse number 241066, and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, and approved precise development plan number 202306 at 14830 Carmonita Road. As I indicated to you tonight, the applicant has their technical experts here to address any concerns that may come up as a result of the action tonight, and any questions that you may have of either staff or the applicant regarding this project. This concludes my presentation. Mr. Mayor, before you open the public hearing, if I may outline the process that I would request the City Council, recommend that the City Council follow tonight in the public hearing. Tonight, this is a public hearing that's been generated as a result of the appellant, the Creed LA, they have filed their appeal to the city's planning, Community Development Department, and that is why it's before you tonight, based on the review of the Planning Commission's decision. My recommendation is that the appellant, the representatives from Creed LA or their counsel, legal counsel, be, offer the opportunity to address the City Council initially first, and that anyone then after the initial presentation, anyone who is in support of the position of the appellant, then be allowed to address the City Council. In addition, that after that is concluded, then the project developer, the project proposer would then have an opportunity to address the City Council again. Each speaker would get three minutes, and then they would be able to present their position regarding the appeal. At the conclusion of that presentation, or their speakers, then the
At the conclusion of that presentation, or their speakers, then the appellant, the representative, one representative from Creed LA would be able to come forward and provide a rebuttal. Then after all testimony has been received, it would come up to the City Council level for deliberation and decision. And with that, Mr. Mayor, it's appropriate to open the public hearing and ask if there's a representative from the appellant, from Creed LA, who would like to speak first.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have a representative here from Creed LA?
Can you please press the button? Thank you.
Oh, it's on? Fantastic. In any case, good evening. My name is Aiden Marshall. I'm here on behalf of Creed LA in support of our appeal. We've appealed this project because it would have potentially significant public health and environmental impacts. A critical flaw that requires the city to uphold our appeal tonight is that the city's relying on a mitigated negative declaration to analyze this project's impacts instead of a full environmental impact report. An MND, if you're not familiar, is an abbreviated form of environmental review, whereas the EIR, Environmental Impact Report, is the full comprehensive form of environmental review. The study that was done for this project lacked a VMT study. It lacked measurements of nighttime noise. It lacked a fire flow study, a quantitative fire flow study, and it also lacked cumulative analysis of health risk impacts on the community. We are thus respecting, respectfully requesting that the City Council uphold our appeal, vacate the Planning Commission's approval of this project, and remand the project back to staff so that a full EIR can be prepared. So I'd like to focus on the standard of review for this project. This is SEQA's fair argument standard. This is a very low standard, basically explaining that a full EIR, as opposed to an MND, has to be prepared for a project when substantial evidence supports even just the fair argument that potential, that significance impacts are potential for this project. This means that even if the city's experts disagree with some of the conclusions of our experts, an EIR must be prepared regardless to fully evaluate this project's impacts. I'd like to just focus on a couple issues at this, at this time, but in summary, evidence in the record is supported by reports by an expert toxicologist, an expert noise expert, and an expert transportation expert, all of which showing potentially significant impacts triggering preparation of an EIR. I'd like to focus just right now on the significant cumulative public health risk impacts on the community. This project is located in what's called an SB thirty-five, five-thirty-five disadvantaged community. It's ranking in the top seven percent for pollution in the entire state. The incremental cancer risk from this individual project, mostly resulting from particulate matter generated by the project's trucks, you know, this is a warehouse generating lots of trucks, would result in cancer risk impacts on the nearest residents of six-point-two-two and one million. Now, it's critical to appreciate that this would exceed the South Coast Air District's draft thresholds, which reduce the significance threshold, requiring mitigation from one, ten and one million to three and one million.
Okay, thank you. Three minutes are up. You'll have another opportunity.
And I should note that the letter that has been submitted by, I believe, your law firm, correct?
Yes.
Is before the City Council. I'm certain that it contains all the elements of your client's position. That will be part of the record, be submitted as part of the record for tonight's hearing. Thank you very much, sir.
Fantastic. I'll be available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Then, Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate to inquire if there's anyone that supports the position that's just been articulated from Creed LA, if there's any other speakers in the audience that wish to address the speak, address the City Council.
Well, I do have cards of people that oppose item ten. I would assume they'd be the same thing.
Before we go into the opposition, we just want to inquire if there's any additional speakers in support of the appeal, in support of the appeal, not in opposition, but in support. You step forward and state your name.
I filled out the card incorrectly. I'm supporting the appeal, opposing the project. This would be the time to speak, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yeah, I just got it backwards. So my name's Danny Osborne. I'm representing the Ion Workers Local four-thirty-three. We're opposing the project, supporting the appeal of, because the applicant has not made a commitment to using a skilled and trained workforce, right, which, as you know, would ensure that the most competent and qualified contractors and workers would be building that project. They've also not made a commitment to hiring locally, which, as you know, would give your constituents an opportunity to work not just on that one project, but to potentially start a mortgage-paying career in the construction trade. So until they're willing to make those commitments, we will oppose the project. We will support the appeal of. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Godfrey Ashira, and I'm with Creed LA, and we're here to request that you uphold our appeal. At Creed, we believe that it's better to measure ten times and cut once, rather than measure once and cut ten times. And that's what the law SEQA asks, that decision-makers have sufficient information to make an informed decision. That is, we measure ten times, and the courts have made it clear that the year, that an EIR is the way to go. And for a development, industrial warehouses, which are known to have negative impacts on public health, they're known to have negative impacts on the environment, an EIR is not only essential, but it is critical in this case. Let's be clear that an EIR is the pathway to development that respects the community and protects the environment, and that's what we are asking for. At some point in the process for this project, they had an MND, and then they stalled, and we, we were hopeful that the next thing that was gonna come up was a notice of preparation for an EIR. Eight months later, all that comes back is a recirculated MND with the same deficiencies that our attorney has, has highlighted here today. And so that's why we've come back here today to ask you to measure ten times by upholding our appeal and asking for an EIR. Thank you. God bless you, and long live informed self-governance.
Hey, next speaker is Vito Basulto.
This is in support of the appeal and in opposition to the?
Yes, sir. Support of the appeal.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Veta Basulto. I am for the appeal. I'm with Anchorage Church. Our community is in need. With a project this large, this is a majority opportunity to be a beacon of hope, supporting these, supporting these hard times. We know that a project of this size could give so much more to our community, but it doesn't seem that this will happen in any meaningful or impactful way. Your citizen, your city deserves better. The city of Norwalk deserves better. Please vote no on this project. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Brenda Campus.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Campus, and I'm here today to speak. Tonight, we're concerned about this project. This project is going to build an even bigger warehouse in place of the smaller ones that are there. The traffic, they're right off the freeway and across from the Lowe's store is already awful. And now there will be more trucks and employee traffic. This doesn't seem good, be, good idea. Please, please control the impacts in the larger warehouse we, we have before you vote tonight. And I like to add, because definitely we have a lot of contamination, and I think that older people, they, sometimes they like to walk, other people who bring kids at the school. It's really hard to have too many traffic, you know, especially in, in a school time. I read before, there's like a hundred and forty more spaces for parking, and you know how busy is the area? I don't know how close we have emergency areas in case that something happened, because like I said, sometimes the mothers bring the kids in the school. It's really hard, you know, to walk in, in these areas, especially when they have this kind of projects in, in mind. I think we need to think before in the community and bring better projects, to bring more access for the families too, because we can, we just can't think in the business. We need to think in the community too, and the kids, and the people who walk, and how they like to breathe, because there's a lot of pollution. Like, again, I thinking, how many cars, how many people, this hard to ask to think like community is not, because we are mean people, it's because we're really thinking like a common sense, you know? There's something like I like to say, if I have one extra minute, I just like to congratulate for all the things that you bring in the video and before. I really proud to be part of this community, and thank you so much for help, your community and the veterans too. Thank you, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Brenda. Next speaker is Juan Delara.
Hi, good evening. I'm Juan Delara, and I wanted to speak up against this project at fourteen-eight-thirty Carmonita Road, and my concern with it. This project is going to demolish a smaller warehouse spaces and build a new warehouse that is almost double the size of what the current, what is currently there. We shouldn't be building an even bigger warehouse spaces that only add to the pollution, health, and traffic that is already there. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Juan. Kathleen Luna, please.
Hello, everyone. I'm Caitlin Luna, and I'm speaking this evening to oppose this project. LA County's current industrial vacancy climbed to four-point-eight percent, and that's a ten-point jump quarter over quarter. Why are we taking about building more industrial buildings when there is so much vacancy and it is continuing to rise? I think better building projects should be brought to our city, and I don't support this project, and I don't feel you should either. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Kathleen. Aiden Marshall, please. Then we have, looks like Jeffrey Washeeta. Okay, Aiden Marshall spoke also. All right. Okay, City Attorney, that's everybody in.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support of the?
Anyone else who wishes to speak in support of the appeal? Please step forward, even if you haven't, if you've filled out a card or no. You're in support of the project, and we'll, we'll be next. Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, then it would be appropriate to call forward representative from the project developer, and whether it be legal counsel or the, or the developer themselves. And they will have three minutes, and then after that, of course, anyone in support of the project will then have the opportunity to address the council.
Good morning, Mr., or evening, Mr. Mayor and Honorable City Council Members. My name is Andrew Fogg. I'm a land use attorney with Cox, Castle &amp; Nicholson. We represent the applicant, Rexford Industrial. There was a letter that was submitted today. There have been letters of the same effect that have been submitted previously. All of those have been responded to. Counsel is correct about the standard of review. We're not going to quibble about SEQA law or what applies. The problem is that they want to look at a project that is not before you. You have a proposal that has been submitted, that has been fully characterized, that has been well-defined. They're making assumptions about uses that are not going to be presented. They make assumptions about air conditioning units that are not being proposed. They're making all kinds of speculative assumptions that are just not accurate and are not consistent with the project description. A fundamental aspect of SEQA is you look at the project description, you look at the elements that are being applied for. If there was to be a future high cube warehouse or something along those lines, they would have to apply for a change of use, and that would have to be analyzed. That's not before you today. So all of their comments and all of their experts are analyzing things that are not part of the project. That's speculation. That's not a dispute amongst experts. That's looking at a fundamentally different project. We have our SEQA consultant here tonight who prepared the documents. We have our traffic engineer. We have the noise consultants. They're happy to answer any of these questions. I will also say that the three-per-million standard that they cite, they even acknowledge that the draft regulation has not been adopted. The applicable regulation is ten-per-million, and the project is admittedly below that. So we don't believe there's any substantial evidence here to require any additional SEQA review, and we would respectfully request that the appeal be denied and that the project be approved. And with that, we're available for any questions that you have. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Then at this point, again, the council questions, we can address to the experts if the council has specific questions, but before we do that, if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in support of the project, please step forward and state your name.
Evening, Mayor. This is Eddie Rivera. I am a member of the Laborers International. We are construction workers. I see the opportunity here to continue celebrating a new business like you did earlier. I see the opportunity to celebrate safe working environment, producing a beautiful product that's going to generate opportunities, is going to generate possibilities of work. This great developer is going to utilize great contractors. Great contractors use union labors, and we will have the opportunity to work on that project, God willing. You guys pass it, move forward with it, continue progress. Why stop progress when our federal president or president seems to be doing a lot of things that aren't going to be as beneficial to us as a community, workers? We see it already. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I would like to see a positive opportunity here, move forward. So it generates these opportunities for construction workers, who will get benefits, who will have healthcare, who will be building a pension, will get opportunity to get skilled and trained. That's what we're doing as we're doing it, right? School, some work, that's part of it. But I'm here to urge you to please pass it. I'd like to see it get built. I'd like to see some security with good-paying jobs for the next twelve, eighteen months, twenty-four months at, at this location. It's just a positive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in support of the project? Records should reflect that no one's stepping forward. I know there is the panel of, of experts from the developer's perspective. However, before we ask the council for any questions, we will allow the appellant. However, before we ask the counsel for any questions, we will allow the appellant to have three minutes to address the counsel in rebuttal.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to come up again. I'm just going to quickly address some of the comments made. First, in regards to the notion that the, that the city has a discretion to rely on a, on a, an outdated air district threshold to analyze cumulative air quality impacts. Please note that the South Coast Quality Air District has recommended that warehouse projects, just like this one, apply the draft thresholds. The air, the air guidance that the city has been relying on has been challenged in court by the Attorney General's Office in People of the United States versus City of Fontana. The City of Fontana had to sign on a massive environmental impact, excuse me, environmental settlement agreement to resolve these issues, making the same exact arguments we are today. So they are far from speculative. I'd like to note that our issues are not related to speculation of what the project could be. It's really what the project before you is. There is this notion about can the warehouse be used for more intensive uses versus what are arguably proposed by the project proponent at this time? I'd like to note that even though there's a condition of approval that's stating that the project can only be used for warehouse uses that fall into Land Use Code 150, which sets, which requires the project to be used for general warehousing as opposed to a more intense use like parcel hubs or fulfillment center. Our expert, transportation expert explains that these more intensive uses are permitted under that land use code. As a result, there's no speculation happening. The project as approved would result in greater impacts than disclosed in the environmental impact, or excuse me, in the mitigated negative declaration before you today. As a result, an environmental impact report has to be prepared in order to fully research these issues. Thank you very much.
Now, Mr. Mayor, before we close the public hearing, I would inquire if any council member has any questions of either side. And if you do, we can put those into the record and receive responses. If you, if the council does not, then we could close the public hearing and bring it up to the council's level for deliberation and decision.
Okay, Councilmember Rios.
Before I begin my questions, I'm wondering, Alex, is there a timeline or is there a, some type of, do we have to address this agenda item tonight is my question? Because I know that there's, there was a question I had at least earlier when we met in closed session that what the information was not available to me. So do we have to address this item tonight? Or is there some type of timeline exigency? What can you share?
I would rely on the applicant as it relates to their particular schedule, but I would recommend that you move forward with the decision tonight based on the evidence that's presented in the various written materials. I understand as a bit of background on this project that they had submitted last year and had gone through the process previously. There were, had prepared an earlier mitigated negative declaration. And then earlier this year, I think in about February, they had requested that the item be tabled because of the market conditions and other forces that were at play that didn't warrant them moving forward. So when they came back to the city, I believe it was, I'm going to say in July or August of this year, staff required that the environmental document be updated because it had been past, you know, over six months since the last data was presented, which they did. And this subsequent document is the updated document to reflect the current conditions and environment. So I would say that the applicant is interested in moving this forward now, whereas before the market conditions weren't such that they were willing to do so, but they're willing to do at this point. So yes, I would recommend a decision by the city council tonight on this appeal. Unless, of course, to the city attorney, unless you hear something that would cause you to pause or request continuance of this, that you want us to look at something, that's certainly within your prerogative as the council, but we feel all the evidence presented tonight does warrant a decision.
Okay. All right, so there was a few questions that I had that I didn't necessarily get the answers that I was looking for. So who, applicant, I don't know who wants to come forward to answer questions regarding the particular project, the actual property in place, the proposed property development, its use, current and future. I know there was a word mentioned, we're talking about speculation and I disagree that we cannot speculate. I believe that as leaders in the community, there has to be a certain amount of speculation because we have to have that, you know, that vision to potentially look at what will be used for that particular location and property. So who would be the best to address the current condition of that property?
If, if you could ask the question, we're happy to bring up the right person. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not entirely sure.
How many load, current loading docks is on the property?
So the, Louis Gomez from Rexford can.
Sorry, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. My name is Brandon Wolf. I'm with EPD Solutions. I've been working with Rexford Industrial for the last three years on this project, running lead through the entitlement side. I'm on the development department side of our company. With me, I have my colleague Megan Truman. She did the environmental analysis with our Sequoia Department and then Hosham with our transportation department who facilitated in analyzing the traffic data for this project. So I'm able, with that introduction, happily here to answer any questions you have pertaining to the project itself, the process we went through, the design standards and criteria. I will defer to Megan specifically for any environmental component questions regarding the MND, the recirculation of the MND and the data within that. And same with Hosham as far as the traffic-specific component, how we came up with our numbers during the VMT analysis screening, why we felt that an EIR is not necessary for the project, including the city's consultants, Somas, who we worked with very extensively on this project, as well as De novo, and also another very well, very well reputable environmental firm in the industry. And then just for clarity purposes in terms of the timeline on the project, we did originally, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
We did originally go back to Planning Commission in December of 2024. That was the original date that we got heard for the project and then went through the process with Creed's appeal letter, responded to a comment letter that was provided that same, probably within an hour of the hearing. Similar situation as it is tonight. Our team has reviewed that letter 30 minutes before the hearing and we are able to answer it to the best of our abilities. Megan is very well-versed in that side of it. But again, any questions you have on the development side, I'm happy to help. And just wanted to provide some clarity there as far as the history to the project and how we got to where we are today.
Okay, yeah, no, no, that's, that's fine. But what I want to know, because the information that was shared was that there was not going to be any traffic impact. And so I'm trying to make sense of how you determined that. And so I'm just kind of trying to figure out. So that's why I wanted to start with my question of how many loading docks are on the current property?
On the current property?
Yes.
I'm not sure of the current count. It's two buildings. One's approximately 43,000 square feet and the other is about 50. They accumulate to around 98,000. I believe the loading docks are on two sides of each of the buildings. Ours is proposed to be 22, but I do not know the exact count of what's going to be removed on the existing warehouses. But I would go on to say they're approximately the same, probably more.
Because I, what I'm guessing is that if there's an increase to the loading docks, that means you're expecting an increase in delivery or, you know, product movement, whatever the case may be in the near future, once the development is complete. Because again, you know, we do have to project into the future and I'm sure the developer and the company has, has an idea of what they potentially want to use this property for. I mean, it wouldn't be good business unless they did. So I'm trying to figure out how you came to your rationale that there's no impact on, on traffic or an impact on the environment. So I had asked before, you know, what the loading, how many loading docks currently? Couldn't get an answer. It doesn't look like you guys have an answer either. So give me an idea of, you know, how it is that you determine that there's no traffic impact, there's no impact to the environment. This is generally an industrial area. I get it. But as a council, I mean, I'd be remiss if I didn't consider the past where we had residents in the area who live on Carmaneta who came to us because of the concerns of traffic in that particular zone, our neighborhood. And so I, you know, wouldn't be doing my due diligence unless I prodded a little bit more on, you know, where you guys are going with this development before I make an informed decision. So who can, who can tell me more?
For that specific piece, I will defer it to Hosham as far as the traffic data that you're requesting.
Okay.
Evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Megan Truman, also with EPD Solution. I'm the environmental consultant from the project. So specifically in regards to your question regarding how we analyze traffic that may result from a project. So we compared the existing trip generation site. It is two industrial warehouse building site. We analyze those at 80,000, 70 square feet. And then we analyze those with a rate for warehousing based off of multiple studies that are conducted across Southern California to get a general rate for what trips occur on a daily basis from a project. So we have the existing trip generation for that warehousing at approximately 154 daily trips. And then what we do is we analyze the proposed industrial uses. We conservatively analyze that as warehousing and general light industrial. General light industrial has a higher trip generation rate than warehouse. So we did conservatively look at that building. And actually, in our trip generation analysis, it was done off of a previous site plan, which was a greater square footage. So it does provide a very conservative estimate of trips. And the proposed warehouse would result in approximately 99 new passenger trips. And then overall, 185 trips total. So it would result in increased trips compared to the existing use that is analyzed throughout the environmental document. We base our air quality analysis on those proposed resulting trips that would occur. We analyze specific trucks that would occur and their resulting emissions. So we do look at the whole of what the project would result in compared to what's existing and analyze those impacts. We compare it to the South Coast Air Quality Management District thresholds, which are set by the district and were utilized within the MND. And we would be below all of the thresholds that they set. So there wouldn't be a significant air quality impact, for example. Same thing for greenhouse gas emissions. We utilize the thresholds set forth by the air district would be below those mission levels as well.
Yeah, I guess it just doesn't make sense if, so you just indicated that there is an increase in trips, yet there's, you're saying at the same time that there would not be an impact to traffic. So I, that's kind of contradictory. I, you know, I don't have to be an engineer to kind of put, you know, that together. And again, I understand, thank you for that explanation, by the way, that was very thorough. And I can appreciate how, you know, there's, you're following the different, you know, laws and guidelines and are looking at the overall picture and study. But what it comes down to is what's right here, what's happening here in the city of Norwalk. So can you answer that? I mean, how do we, how do we do that? How do you say we're increasing trips, but it's not an impact to traffic?
Hi, good evening. I'm Hosham Basrawi. I'm working with EPD Solutions as part of the transportation team. As my colleague previously mentioned, the project is going to result in an increase of 99 passenger car, passenger trips, which is less than the threshold stated in the Los Angeles County Transportation Impact Analysis Guidelines. Therefore, the project would not warrant the preparation of a VMT analysis or ATIA analysis per the county guidelines.
I do, again, I do understand that and I appreciate that, the county guidelines. But again, I'm just looking at what's, you know, what's going to, what we can anticipate is going to happen in the city of Norwalk, that particular area as a result of that development. And then having to answer to, you know, the neighborhood, the area. Again, I know it's residential, but there is a neighborhood that's very adjacent there and we've heard concerns in the past. I don't want to belabor this issue. And so I'm going to go back to my original question, Alex. Do we have to decide on this now because, or unless, I don't know if I'm the only one that, as a council, my fellow council colleagues here have these questions that I feel at least are not being answered to my satisfaction. So I would feel better if we had some time to really look more at, again, addressing how specifically, you know, it's just when I receive contradictory information, it kind of puts a little question mark in my mind, you know, and I can't, I don't feel I'm getting, you know, the information that I need to make an informed decision.
That would be at the council's discretion, of course. I did want to remind you that there are some conditions of approval that we did negotiate with this developer. The attorney did point out the one as it relates to the IT Land Use Code 150. The significance of that is while we don't know what is proposed for this building, at least to our knowledge at this, at this point, we did lock in a set of general uses that were identified in condition number 14 of your, of the staff report under project-specific that basically says it'll be limited to this type of use, warehouse. There'll be a certain square footage devoted to cold storage, but a maximum square footage. And that really locks them in in terms of what they can put in that building without requiring additional analysis. So we have built in some protections for the city for those future uses that may fall out of that box that are not in that code 150. But again, that's to the council's discretion.
No, I totally understand and I appreciate that, Alex. But I'm, I really would rather just, you know, save that time in the future to just address what's currently before us. Again, knowing as, as leaders here, my colleagues are having the foresight to see potentially, you know, what can we do now? Are we all comfortable with the information that's been provided in order to come to an informed decision? And can we, you know, put this off or postpone it until we get more information, including what you've, you know, what you've just shared, Alex? So, you know, these stipulations that have been placed, you know, here. Again, what I would want to know then, what potentially would they be able to do with it? You know, because I'm sure they're already thinking about, well, there has to be a plan, I guess, is what I'm saying. There has to be a plan on everybody's part, especially the company, to, you know, figure out, first of all, why they want to construct, you know, the building, you know, enlarge the actual building and have this development. And I get the aesthetics, thank you. I mean, that it's aesthetically pleasing. I get that, that's, that's all fine. But again, there's just other variables that aren't really sitting, sitting well with me. The last thing I'll say, because I'm, I've taken time, plenty of time here already, is why, why not a Sequoia?
May I respond?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. So a Sequoia document was prepared. So this gets to a fundamental question under Sequoia. It's an issue that is basic to Sequoia law. So under Sequoia, there are a series of thresholds that are established across the board. And they can range from aesthetics to land use, to biology, to traffic, to greenhouse gases, to energy, public services. There's a whole checklist that is prepared. And for each of those questions, there is what is called a threshold of significance that is adopted by the city, separate from the project itself, that is a generally applied threshold of. And so what, the way that the Sequoia document works is it says, you take the project that is prepared before you and you analyze all the potential environmental impacts that will result from that project. And you compare them to the thresholds of significance. And you compare them to the thresholds of significance that are generally adopted and applicable. So, what the city has done in this case through the work at EPD is the, the impacts of the project, the change. So, you have an old warehouse that is inefficient and doesn't work well to being proposed to be replaced with a new modern warehouse. And you compare that. And it is getting bigger in size and there will be additional traffic. That is absolutely true. The question that is presented is, is that traffic going to be significant? And the way that significance is measured, it's measured against the threshold of significance. So, the threshold of significance, for example, on a vehicle miles traveled analysis, it's 110 increase of, you know, 110 truck trips per day or different standards that would apply. And so, the analysis is, is looked at and said, are you exceeding? Is the net new going to exceed these various thresholds? And so, the CEQA document goes through and compares the increase against the thresholds of significance. And it looks at mitigation measures as well. Is there, does the mitigation measure reduce the threshold or reduce the impacts in a way that it brings it below the threshold? The question of whether a subsequent CEQA document, so there is a CEQA document that has been prepared. Question is whether a, a, a larger, more detailed document, an environmental impact report, hinges on the analysis within the MND. So, it's an initial study mitigated negative declaration. Are there any impacts that exceed the thresholds of significance that the city has adopted? And that's the question that's before you. So, yes, there can be an increase in every category. But if it doesn't exceed an adopted threshold of significance, then an environmental impact report, not only is it not required, it's prohibited. So, that is the standard that applies generally under CEQA. So, I, I agree. There, there will be increases. There can be increases in noise. There may be decreases in noise because as newer operations, you have new equipment, it operates more, you know, more efficiently, less, less noisily. There will be, you know, electric forklifts rather than gas-powered forklifts. There are all these things that go into the mix and everything's been analyzed. So, that is the way that CEQA works generally. So, when we talk about, is there going to be a significant impact on the environment or to, you know, council's correct estimation? Is there a fair argument that there's going to be a significant impact on the environment? That is all based and measured against the thresholds of significance within the MND. And so, that has been analyzed, it's been vetted by the city. That is the yardstick against which everything's being measured. And so, that is where you look at it and say, is there a significant impact or not? So, I know that doesn't answer your question necessarily on, is the, the delay at an intersection near the building going to be, you know, are we gonna have to wait 30 seconds longer to get through that red light? Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on your point of view, the state of California says you can't look at that anymore for CEQA. That's called a level of service and that's been outlawed. You have to look at this vehicle miles traveled analysis and that's what was used. I totally understand where you're coming from. It's just when we get into these technical documents, that's what the law requires. And so, that's part of the challenge in trying to understand, you know, we have a global, global greenhouse gas crisis that we're all facing. We all know that. Every additional molecule arguably is cumulatively significant. That's not the way the law reads them. It says, to be significant, you have to exceed a certain.
No, no, I get that. And one, if I may, Mayor, just one final comment and I appreciate you guys' patience. I, I'm pro-business. I am pro-union. I am pro-local hire. I definitely, I mean, that's without question. I just, but I'm also pro-the-environment and I'm also pro-being, you know, having that forethought to see potentially the issues that this may bring and how, we're in a situation now, how do we mitigate them? And I do that based on the past, you know, what I do know, what I know now and what I can potentially safely, you know, believe may, may be an issue in the future. So, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Yeah. From what I understood, Alex, from closed session, is that we do not, even if we get the, well, let me, let me rephrase that. My understanding from what we're talking about right here is that we are not relinquishing our control over what the project eventually becomes, because this is just one part of the process. It's not like if council adopts this, that we lose control of what the ultimate use of the project is. Is that correct?
So, Mayor, to answer your question, as it relates to the condition that I cited earlier, you're not relinquishing control. I could certainly suggest an even more stringent condition to address future uses. I know that probably wouldn't make the developer happy. But, so I can't sit here tonight and say that, that you'll get to see this project again, or even the planning commission. However, you could, we could craft a condition here that limits the uses. And if it goes beyond that, it could go back to the planning commission and/or the city council.
Well, there's a couple, there's, there's a, I think there's a couple of things there that, you know, because I'm concerned about traffic, I'm concerned about what one of the testimonies had to do with the neighborhood quality, air quality, things like that. But I don't believe that that's what we're dealing with right now. I believe what we're dealing with is, you know, a, a foundation piece, but not what the ultimate use is. So, really, the city council isn't relinquishing much other than to approve the actual construction of the warehouse.
That is correct, Mayor. And again, I go back to the Condition 14, which is pretty tightly written. It, you know, states that, you know, the SIC code or ITE code, as they call it, 150, which is a general warehouse use. So, it, it defines it and limits it at this point. But to your point, you're approving, if you approve this tonight, you're approving a, a cube warehouse, basically, that will be state-of-the-art, fully code compliant with a tenant to be determined, because we don't know who that is unless the applicant is prepared to indicate who that is. So, yes, you're not, you're not relinquishing all the, the control that you have. I also, Mayor, if I could, I wanted to point out something that sort of transcends this project, but that Councilmember Rios pointed out, one that we need to look at when we update our general plan, is a lot of these impacts in Carmoneda are coming out of adjacent cities, as you well know. We're, we're dealing with impacts from Santa Fe Springs, from Cerritos, all of those things that sort of add up that, by the way, would and do get factored into any and all environmental analysis. But there is a bigger picture there that's something that we need to look at in the future as to how we address those issues. But not for tonight, but those things do get factored into the analysis.
Yeah, I'm feeling that if we're talking about the construction of a building and that ultimately, as the process evolves, we can protect the people that are requesting that we protect them, then I'm okay with moving forward with it. Any other comments? Question?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a few. And I just want to thank you for your current comments and Alex for the reply. Ultimately, what is here before us tonight is what the planning commission voted on. They actually saw the entire scale of the project. You know, the ingress, the egress, the elevations, that is in the planning commission's report. And that's, ultimately, we, we entrust our planning commissioners to do their due diligence when looking at an item. This is an industrial area of the city. It's already zoned for industrial resources and projects. And in looking at it, we are taking two parcels and improving them. And because of the conditions in Condition 14 and the items that you have laid before us, I do believe that we are protecting the city with what is the future of the tenants and what will come in. We know that it should, another application or when the applicant comes to bring in an actual tenant, there's going to be conditions with the CUP and possibly PDP that they're gonna have to apply for. Those are where the city comes in and holds the restrictions to more stringent, stringent guidelines. I've looked at it many times. I said on the planning commission for over eight years, what we are voting on tonight is not the business. We're looking at the construction of a new building, improving an area that is pretty, that, you know, pretty, it needs some help. We also have to take into consideration, when we talk about environmental resources and air quality, that big, huge piece of cement that goes north and south up through the city known as the five freeway. As much as we want to say that some of these businesses are, you know, the sole resource of pollutants in our city, we have four major freeways that's come through the city of Norwalk, that when looking at the air quality, environmental impacts, that also takes into effect. So, we can't punish our businesses or look at that when we are actually taking into account how many people drive through our city every single day on the five, the six, the five, the 105 and the 90. So, I, I do have confidence in our planning commission and in the staff to make a recommendation that they did and to move forward like they had. And I'm, I'm ready to move forward with this tonight because that's what we're looking at. We're not looking at the business.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may just also respond in part to that, but also to highlight a condition of approval that's, hasn't been mentioned yet. But I think it's addressing some of the concerns expressed by the city council. And it's standard number three. It states, "Construction and/or modification of the project shall be in substantial conformance with the submitted plans as described in the agenda report to the planning commission and as approved by the planning commission. The director of community development shall determine whether a modification is in substantial conformance. All changes shall return to the original review authority, except that the planning commission shall review all major changes involving items that were originally authorized by the city council. Notices shall be given in the same manner as what was required for the original application." So, that condition places before the community development director, the planning commission if necessary, and possibly on appeal up to the city council if there's any substantial change in this project.
If there's no further questions, I'll call for the vote.
And then, before that, can we close the public hearing? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, since there's no other questions, if there are no other questions.
The public hearing is now closed.
Okay. Now, it's appropriate to entertain a motion.
If there's no further questions, I'll call for the vote.
All right. Do we have a motion?
What's, what's your motion? Would you like me to make the motion?
To roll call vote.
But we need a motion.
But you need a motion.
If you're upholding the, the decision or not.
Okay, I'll make a motion to call for the vote.
But we need to know what you're voting on.
If there's no further questions, I'd just like to move.
You want, you want the?
Move the process.
You're making motion to, to support the staff, the staff recommendation?
I'm gonna make a motion to deny and I'm gonna tell you why. And if I, if I may just comment on my vote. And I, and I respect everyone's comments for and against, as well as my colleagues. You guys made valid points and I respect your decisions. But, you know, I'm very cautious of approving businesses. I'm very pro-business. I'm very supportive of progress in the city. But the impact that it may create, because we don't know the end use, right? We're, we're putting the cart before the horse and developing a project that we don't know what, what, what its intended use may be. And I get it, that's may not be for us today. It's about the environmental impact, right? But in totality, we have to look at the big picture. We've, we've approved major projects in the city that, you know, we supported full-heartedly because they brought it directly to us in totality of the bigger picture. I have full faith in, in the commission, but sometimes the commission may get it wrong. It's just like we make decisions that we may be getting it wrong. But the fact that we don't have an end use, I don't know what's to be expected. We've had major issues and concerns with traffic impact along Carmoneda, with, with the distribution center outside of our city that's impacted our city. I don't want to see this play over and over again when we approve projects that we don't know what its end use is gonna be. So, based on that, and there's probably more that I missed, I'm gonna vote no.
And that's your motion?
That's my motion.
We have, so the motion is to uphold the appeal, which would in essence be against the project presented?
Correct.
So, we need a motion, Mr. Mayor, to some effect.
Yeah.
Because I don't think, and I'm looking at the city clerk. Do we have a motion on the floor, Madam City Clerk?
The motion would be what you just said.
Well, it's me, but I don't get to make motions.
Well, I believe that's what Councilmember Ramirez is heading toward.
Correct. Correct. Okay. So, there is a motion.
There's a motion to, right. So, the motion is to uphold the appeal.
Correct.
Which means it would deny the project.
Correct.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Ramirez?
Okay, so my voting.
If you vote yes, you're voting to uphold the appeal as you moved, as you made your motion.
Yes, okay.
It's tricky up here, folks.
Let me clarify so that everyone understands. This is not an easy job up here.
On the floor is a motion to uphold the appeal. The appeal has been made by Creed LA to overturn the planning commission's decision. If the council overturns the planning commission's decision, this project, as approved by the city council, will not go forward at this time.
I vote aye.
Councilmembers Rios?
Can I ask a question, Arnold?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I just, I just want to clarify, because I know this is something that I mentioned early, very, very early on, as far as postponing until we were all at least in a better position and place for the information, a lot of the unknowns. Would this give staff the opportunity to clarify some of these issues, give us more information to make a better informed decision? Again, working collaboratively, because we're all pro-business, but as we mentioned before, you know, being pro-business means collaborating and that means going both ways. And so, because it was some question regarding future use, number one, the fact that I was told there would not be a traffic impact, yet I heard directly that there is an increase in rides. And also, I want to mention what Alex said when he proposed to the council tightening it up a little bit more. You mentioned something, you, you, you mentioned something that we could potentially look at in order to feel better about potential future uses. So, I, I do think that staff may have, you know, some other ideas and thoughts on, you know, how do we, how do we make this, you know, successful?
Can I interject in this, Margarita, for one second?
Yes.
Is it, I'm leaning more towards what you're saying, that it seems to me, right, it might make sense to continue it. And if you and, and Councilmember Ramirez have very specific questions about how the city's covered to these things to your satisfaction, then at another time, we can move forward or we can go against it right now. But if you have very, you know, specific questions, and Rick has very specific questions about what the end use is and so on, and gives the staff an opportunity to talk to the company to see what those are and kind of drill down on the questions we have, then it makes more sense to me to, to continue the item than to just outright reject it. And I would throw that out as a...
But we have Rick's motion already.
If I may jump in for the procedural aspect to make sure we're all doing it again. You have a motion on the floor. It has been seconded. Right now, you're voting on that motion.
Okay.
If I, if I may continue. Your option is, if you want to refer this back to staff to work with the developer to try and get some of these questions resolved, again, I'm not gonna direct the council on what to do, but suggest that, that you could withdraw your second, or, yeah, you would have to withdraw your second and then make a substitute motion under the procedural responses.
I got you, Arnold. Yeah, I got you.
So, you withdraw your second, so there not be, unless someone else wants a second, Councilmember Ramirez's motion.
I'm gonna, yeah, okay. I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt, Arnold, but, no, I'm gonna... I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, Arnold, but, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote, and I'm voting aye.
The original motion had seconded.
And the original motion is presented by Councilmember Ramirez.
Councilmember Valencia.
Does that mean that we can still have conversations and come back and whatnot?
Not if it.
Well, the, the appeal would be upheld.
And that gives opportunity to?
No.
No, it, it, I don't, Alex, maybe you or your staff can assist.
Yeah, what would happen after?
Yeah, it would be, because I don't think our municipal code addresses that.
So, so when, um.
Well, we'd have to come back with a, with a resolution upholding the appeal. So the, the council would, in essence, get a second bite of the apple. Because if, tonight, if there's no resolution in front of the city council to uphold the decision, because if there's no resolution upholding the appeal with findings, I'm sure that the applicant of the project can file a court action. We don't want to see a court action, and we may get there anyway. But to answer your question, council member, if, if the matter, if this motion passes, it will come back to the council to consider the final action on what you're moving tonight. Because there has to be a resolution upholding the appeal with findings and a conclusion. Right now, before you tonight, in your packet is only a resolution of staff's recommendation, which is to deny the appeal. So, but again, I don't think our municipal code addresses that.
Yeah, thank you, honorable counsel. To city attorney's point, if you vote on the motion tonight to deny the, or uphold the appeal thereby denying the project, there, I'll have to research, there may be a time limit. If you do that tonight, they may not be able to refile an application for 12 months, but we'll look into that, I don't want to misstate that. The other option, to city attorney's point, is that you don't have that motion in front of you tonight formally to uphold the appeal and deny the project, we'd have to come back with that resolution at a future council date anyway, which would require a vote. So I hope that makes it a little clearer.
I know procedurally, it, it gets convoluted and complex. Yeah, before you is the appeal. If you want to refer it back to staff, council has that opportunity. If you, so if you vote, you can, you can vote to, well, if you vote to uphold the appeal, it does go back to staff, but comes back before you on your decision of whether or not to uphold the appeal.
But, and just to clarify.
Yes.
We have two for one decision, have not taken the vote on the other. If it goes a different direction, a different motion can be made as well.
That is correct. So you can, you can vote on the, a motion before you. If that motion does not pass, you can, someone can offer a new, a new motion, and that motion does not have to be to deny the appeal either, it can be to refer it back to staff.
Mayor, question. Were you going to be thinking about presenting any motion? Were you thinking about presenting that new motion?
We have, we have a, we have a.
Wow. All right. You know, I, I think there's a lot that needs to be done, that there's a lot of conversations we had, so I'm gonna be a yes.
No.
And Mayor Ayala.
Now, you said this is gonna come back to us as a resolution, correct?
It will come back to you to make a final decision.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
If we uphold the appeal, okay, is that a binary decision on this project, up or down?
Because before you tonight is the appeal and the recommendation from staff, and a resolution before you tonight is to deny the appeal. In order for the council to make a final decision on the, on upholding the appeal, it has to be a separate resolution with findings. And you do not have that before you tonight, Mr. Mayor or council.
Okay. So once again, voting against the appeal does not kill the project.
Well, it might. But again, I, you know, it comes back before the council on your resolution of denial. A resolution upholding, I should say, upholding the appeal.
Now, when that comes back to us as a resolution, do we, are we gonna have answers to the questions that are being asked tonight? Will that be added to, will that be added to a, to the report that goes along with the resolution that clarifies what my colleagues are asking? Because I don't want, I don't want to vote no on this and then end up coming back here on the resolution and all the same questions are gonna be asked.
So Mayor, if I may, in my experience, we could come back, a lot of times on these appeals, you'll see two motions, one to affirm and one to deny, or, you know, yea or nay. We provided one tonight in support of the planning commission's decision. We could come back with the denial, the, to affirm that. We could also come back with the additional analysis and the questions that you've asked tonight with a reso to, to affirm the planning commission's decision. So we could come back with dueling resolutions, if you will.
Well, what I'm saying is, what's, what's gonna end up happening is, we're gonna end up in the same place if, if my colleagues' questions aren't answered, you know?
And if I may follow up to Mr. Hamilton's comments. If, if the council wants more information, if that's what you do, you know, again, I am not presupposing what the council may want, you can still, what the best solution would be is to reopen the public hearing, continue the public hearing to whatever date certain we have, direct staff to present to the council the requested motion in support of the appeal with findings. So then what would come back before you is the findings of what's before you tonight on the, well, with the request for the appeal to be upheld and the competing resolution of the appeal to be denied. And you can direct staff to get further information that comes into the public record, and then you can vote on up or down. That's up to the council. But if tonight, if, if tonight, if you, if you vote, there's no resolution in front of you to, to uphold the appeal. So it's still gonna come back to you, one way or the other. It is.
Well, if it's gonna come back to us, there's enough uncertainty in my mind that I'll, that I'll vote no on this. But it's, for me, it's, again, it's not a binary thing. It's something that I want to, I mean, let's face it, folks, there warehouses there, there's gonna be warehouses there, it's not gonna suddenly become a park or a shopping center or anything else. So I mean, no matter how you shuffle the deck, we're looking at warehouses. And so I think, though, knowing that, you know, there's, there's still some, you know, there's still some answers that obviously needed, need to be answered. And if it's, if this isn't our first and only swing at it, then I'm comfortable voting no on the appeal, but I need assurance that what I just said is true.
So Mayor, to your point, I'll, I'll rely on the city attorney, but in this case, it has to come back to you. We have three no votes to, or votes to uphold the appeal, saying no tonight. It's gotta come back to you anyway, because we don't have that resolution prepared tonight. So it's gonna come back for that final action.
Okay, well, I just want to make it clear that I'm, I might be a no vote on this, but it doesn't mean that I'm no on the project if I can get the answers that I need to have. I think it's important for you guys to know that. So then I'll, then I'm a no vote.
So, well, just to clarify, because what I'm hearing and what you're saying are two different things, sorry. Are you voting to uphold the appeal?
No, I'm voting, yeah, I'm voting to, no, I'm voting, I'm voting against the, I'm voting against upholding the appeal.
Against what? I'm sorry.
Upholding the appeal.
Yeah, so that's a yes vote, then? Because the motion was to uphold, or to deny the appeal, so you're voting yes, then. I just wanted to clarify for the record, right? He, he is voting?
The motion was to uphold the appeal.
Right. And so are you voting for that, yes, Tony?
A vote of yes is to uphold the appeal.
That's what I'm asking, though.
As a result, if that motion carries, and we have three affirmative votes at this point.
Right.
It gets, but by, by default, it gets referred back to staff.
No, I understand. What I'm, I'm just clarifying.
His vote.
His vote.
I understand.
Are you voting with Rick and Margarita and, and Councilmember Valencia, sorry?
Correct.
So he's voting yes.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I hope everyone got educated tonight, okay? We, we do make tough decisions up here, but it's always for the benefit of the community. But hope you enjoyed it.
So as a result of the vote, and let's announce the vote, there's four votes in favor of the motion, one in opposition. This matter will then be sent back to staff in order to prepare a staff report and a, a resolution upholding the appeal. It will come back to the city council, and if there's additional information that staff wishes to present, they may do so, and, you know.
And I, you know, I encourage my colleagues, for any questions having to do with this particular project, get them to, get them to Alex, so we can just go through the whole, so we can go through the whole gamut right there.
Understood.
And is it possible to possibly have two prepared resolutions at that meeting? Because let's be honest, if we change the decision to move forward and uphold the planning commission's decision, we would then need to come back at another council meeting to correct that resolution at the same time. Because what he's gonna bring is a resolution for one direction, and if answers are correct and provided, then we need a resolution for that. So we need quite possibly two resolutions. Otherwise, we go another.
We will follow.
Four to six weeks.
Council's direction, but you're right. I mean, right now, it's, what would normally happen is you'd have the opportunity to reevaluate your motion that's here tonight, but, yeah, but you're going to have a resolution before you that denies the, denies the project and upholds the planning commission and upholds the appeal.
That's if the applicant is going to be submitting that information in order to make a more informed decision, correct?
I understand.
And if they don't bring forward that information, then there wouldn't be required that second resolution.
We, uh.
Maybe work together, find out.
Yes, we will. We will work with them, we'll work together on this and potentially come back with two options, but with that analysis, that hopefully answers your additional questions in a satisfactory manner.
Yeah, the analysis is gonna be the key piece of it, you know?
And the applicant of the project can always ask for a motion for reconsideration of the decision, so, and council speaking.
Okay. That's clear. Hey, where were we at, Teresa? Is there anything else I need to do here?
This matter has concluded, Mr. Mayor.
Pardon me?
This matter has concluded, we can move on to item number 11.
Next item, item 11, resolution number 25-56, budget amendment for project number 7359 and 7607 Hermosillo Park, guaranteed maximum price agreement. Staff report, please.
Yes, mayors members of the city council, we, we.
Tonight, we have the Hermosillo Park project, and this includes two different projects in one park. One is the stormwater park, and the other is the actual park itself. And we will have two teams, two different departments presenting. We have Mr. Alan Perdomo, and we will also have Mr. Mario Marra and Run that will help us with the presentation to be able to provide you with the information. So with that, I will leave it up to you to decide who goes first.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. So the item for consideration this evening is an award design-build agreement for designing construction services for the Hermosillo Park rehabilitation, stormwater capture, and infiltration project. Like Mr. Gomez said, we do have Mario and Run available to help me with this presentation. It's a dual department, and we also have my colleague to my left. So quick background, on January 16th of 2024, the city council awarded a progressive design-build contract to Reyes Construction for the design and build of Hermosillo Park. That team includes Reyes Construction as a general contractor, Welding Engineering as a civil designer, DHD as a stormwater system designer, RIM Architects as the architect, and Alliance Outreach, which is doing the public communications outreach of the element. The next slide, again, this is just the project location. I think we're fully where Hermosillo Park is located, but this is kind of how it looks at, at the larger level. The next picture, this is a conceptual, I think the council, and I think everyone in the community has seen this, like, again, we have the synthetic fields, the community center, amphitheater, playground, an enhanced parking lot, and a lot of new trees and drought landscaping. And what you don't see in the picture is what the next slide presents, which is the infiltration system that will go below the park. And those technical questions, Mario or Run can answer for you. Couple more background on the project. At 65% design, Reyes provided a construction and a cost estimate exceeding the project budget by 73%. Project planning, preliminary design, and scape, and scoping were performed in 2018. The global pandemic in 2020 and the, and the subsequent inflation in the economy increased pricing, especially, especially in labor costs. With a cost estimate of $52 million, the project budget shortfall is over $22 million. City staff, in collaboration with the design build team, conducted value engineering to reduce the budget shortfall. City staff submitted requests to save clean water for additional $9.9 million of measure W funding, which was approved at the November 4th Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors meeting. So as of, as of today, I'm very proud to say that the park is fully funded at a total cost of $51,432,600. There's two, there's two boxes below you. The one to the left, it really covers all the different costs of the project. If you notice the one in the red font, that's just what we're asking the council to approve today, only the construction with Reyes Construction. But there are other different elements that are part of the overall scope of the project. To the right of that, that is all the different funding sources that made this project possible. And with the recommendation, we, staff asked the city council to, first of all, adopt resolution 25-56, a resolution of the city council, the city of Norwalk, authorizing an amendment to the adopted fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget, increasing the amount of $10,404,164 for the construction of Hermosillo Park, and approve a design-build agreement to establish a guaranteed maximum price provided by Reyes Construction in the amount of $49,631,712 for construction of the Hermosillo Park project, project number 7359 and 7607, and authorize city manager to execute any future amendments. project number 7359 and 7607, and authorize city manager to execute any future amendments provided there is funding in the budget and it is within his signing authority on behalf of the city and a form approved by the city attorney. That concludes my presentation, but before I hand it over to you, I, I definitely want to thank Mario and Run, um, along with Sonia Bautres, I think she's still behind me, and our supervisor, Maury Camacho. They've been working, well, I had the pleasure of working with them for the last two years to really put this project together. We do have, um, some representatives from Reyes Construction, also want to thank them. It was a team effort, but I know I want to give these two gentlemen a tremendous round of applause because they really worked really hard to make this happen. Uh, with that, I won't be able to for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Alan. Um, with the absence of the mayor, I'll bring it back to council, see if there's any questions for either Alan, Mario, or Run, or anybody from the team. No questions? All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve both items A and B. Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios. Valencia.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, moving next to oral communications.
Vice Mayor, if I may, just make one comment. I just want to thank, um, the staff. We had a project that was 20 million short, and, um, these gentlemen, uh, Alan and Mario and Run went and convinced committees and LA County supervisors to get another 20 million to fund the project. So I just want to congratulate you and thank you for, for making that happen. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was said because it was funded five years ago. And the costs have risen so much that we were literally 20 million short, and they went, they went and they got the money. So thank you for that, and the community thanks you.
Mayor, we did, um, move forward with a vote. Do you want to vote on that?
I thought it was a receiving file. Oh, it's actually a resolution. Yeah, okay. Yeah, put me down as a yes vote.
Thank you, I'll do that.
Did read the report, so we're, we're okay. Okay, uh, next item has oral communications. We have somebody here to talk about, um, Small Business Saturday. Is that Karen? Come on up.
All right, so, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members, manager. We have a little surprise for the five of you and our city manager that Jose is going to give out. We want to remind everybody that this is the season for shopping, and we want to make sure that you continue to shop local. 68 cents out of every dollar that's spent in the community stays in the community. And our theme for our small business season and Small Business Saturday this year is that every purchase has a purpose. So please remember that when you're out shopping this holiday season to fulfill your purpose of supporting your community by shopping small. We invite you to the Norwalk Chamber of Commerce on Saturday, November 29th, for a Small Business Saturday Coffee and Doughnut kickoff, and then we're going to send everybody out to shop local, so. Once again, remember to shop local. Thank you.
Hey Karen, for people that don't know where Chamber Office is at.
Right across the street from that, uh, warehouse you were just talking about. Sorry.
Wow, really? Really, Karen?
Right, literally across the street. 14783 Carmenita Road.
Wow.
Just north of Lowe's Hardware.
I know we kept you waiting here for a while, but man, that was, that was, that was dirty.
Any other, any other questions?
Will you be?
Yes, I do. We have a board meeting tomorrow.
Will you be serving coffee and cookies or something?
Yeah, we will. We'll have refreshments, and we'll enjoy giving away more shopping bags and some other fun Small Business Saturday paraphernalia, so.
I know, I know you've been doing this for a long time.
Yeah. Love it here.
This event, and that's, it's really important, and I know that the small business people in town really appreciate it. Appreciate that support, and you're always there for them, so on behalf of the city, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, uh, Ernesto. Do we have an Ernesto? Okay. What about a Sarah? Do we have a Sarah? What's that? You're Ernesto? All right.
Good evening, good evening, city council. Going to use my time today to center the families that were taken by ICE. Um, I'm going to read a quote that was taken from the common guidelines provided by the city. Uh, it says, pursuant provisions of the Brown Act, no action, um, may be taken on a matter unless it is listed on the agenda or unless certain emergency or special circumstances exist. With that being said, there are masked men, masked agents, that are refusing to identify themselves that terrorize our streets, profiling individuals, and ripping families apart. Um, we had a flower vendor, um, that was taken from the 605 exit off of Rosecrans about two Mondays ago, uh, leaving behind a wife and a 10-year-old child, 10-year-old little girl. I really don't understand what entails a, an emergency, or what would, you know, some, an individual call something an emergency? Um, that sounds like an emergency to me. Um, I personally work with parents, um, and provide therapy for neurodivergent individuals, kids mainly. And there is a significant decline in these clients' developments and these children's developments as a result of these raids. Um, these kids aren't getting, uh, doctor's appointments, they're not going to their doctor's appointments, they're not going to their dentist's appointments. Um, the parents are incredibly stressed and worried, and an apps, uh, pretty much, an anxious parent, a very stressed parent, is an absent parent. So that child, that child that needs that, desperately needs that development, um, in those very, very, uh, fragile stages of life, they're not getting that as a result of these raids. Um, it's almost as if their own homes are becoming their own prisons. Truthfully, I don't think anything is going to come from the city council. Um, I'm really up here just trying to let my voice be heard to the community, that there are people out there that care, and we will continue to care to the very end. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernesto. Uh, Sarah.
Good evening. While watching the previous council meeting, I was pleased to see city manager Jesus Gomez finally acknowledge the fact that we've been coming for months to ask the city to do something about the ongoing ICE raids, and I'm pleased to see that the updates continue today during today's meeting, no doubt to community pressure. What I was surprised to hear was that city attorney Arnold Alvarez Glassman had to say during the previous meeting. Among other things, he mentioned that our demands are outside city council jurisdiction, and that due to the Brown Act, city council members are not allowed to respond to public comment. For reference to Brown Act, as you know, for the general comment period, the public can give comments on any matter within the subject jurisdiction of the legislative body. All of our asks have been within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, and I know that you are well aware of that based on the fact that you, city attorney, work for other cities that have passed legislation in their cities protecting their residents from ICE. We are well aware that you do not have control over federal policies and actions, but what you do have control over city council, and what is your responsibility is dealing with the consequences of those federal actions, which is the fear experienced by your residents and the trauma left behind, not only for your undocumented immigrants, but of mixed-status families, friends, and colleagues all being impacted. You will not gaslight us into believing that it is not the city's responsibility to deal with that. You all talk often about the importance of public safety, and yet studies show that residents are less likely to utilize emergency services due to fear of immigration. Everyone deserves to feel safe and secure in our city regardless of immigration status. A city who does not publicly embrace and support all the residents is not a city who cares about them or their safety. One extremely simple example action to make is to make it known to your residents where you stand and that you're here to support them and protect them. I hear you now making comments during city council meetings, but I have yet to see a public comment for the majority of the city that's not at these meetings to see. I was told over the summer by Vice Mayor Jennifer Perez that she did not know if the city had the authority to make a post in support of our immigrant residents. Um, simply by doing a quick Google search of other cities and mayors that have made public comments, we know that is far from the truth. I've been trying to reflect on what makes Norwalk special, that the city council wouldn't be able to put out statements and support their residents when their neighboring cities can, and what, what it must come down to is your values. It's obvious most of you don't agree and don't care about the trauma happening to our residents. Mayor Yala, you say that the city has been offering social services for years, um, but the situation, this situation doesn't call for what you've been doing for years. It calls for emergency action. You also say you can't respond to public comments due to the Brown Act, but yet you do respond to speakers that you agree with, like we just saw before with the lady that gave out the bags. Um, after someone you don't agree with, we just move on. So you make your values clear by your actions, which is why I'm here to say that we want to vote you out. Last meeting, the speaker brought up term limits, and they were right. I want to say to the city of Norwalk residents, we cannot let, keep letting these people run in and out of the city council and run our city. It's time that we have city council members that support and respect our residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Brittany Spears.
Good evening, um, thank you, uh, city manager, for acknowledging the community, the community putting in work this last year for the families affected is better late than never. Um, just this past weekend, I was at the Quermez, which is fundraiser in English, this past weekend in the pouring rain, along with other community members to support El Poblano, the vendor that was kidnapped. However, you know, it was a great turnout, despite the weather. And it was beautiful to see the ongoing support from the community. But who I did not see there was anybody from city council supporting. You know, that would have been a great photo op, just saying. Thank you for also mentioning what it is you are doing as a city to support. I think it is a good start, but it's still way behind other surrounding cities' efforts. I would like to remind you all that the ICE raids are the emergency crisis that Marino Group, who is being paid $100,000, can be working on right now at this moment. I also would like to remind you that not everyone watches these city council meetings. This is a working-class community, and it requires effort outside of the minimal social media announcements to communicate to the hard-to-reach communities whom are the ones being the most affected. Any person in experience, any person with experience in communications would know this. Thank you.
Thank you, um. Do we have an Austin?
I was going to come up here and repeat the same talking points as to why the city should take measures to protect our undocumented neighbors like I have for the last six months. But now that the city of Norwalk is publicly acknowledging that ICE raids are happening in, in the city, I'll talk about a fundraiser I attended here in Norwalk for a flower vendor that was kidnapped off of the 605 Rosecrans exit instead. His wife and daughter, who he was providing for, were there toiling away to ensure that everyone in attendance was served. It was beautiful to see the community come together and raise funds for the family that is just trying to survive, just like everyone else in this room. There was a moment where I looked over at the 10-year-old daughter, walking back and forth, phone in hand, urging the large, uh, social media following his, the, sorry. Urging the large social media following, this flower vendor has amassed to come and support her and her family. No child should be going through that. It was honestly a surreal moment. Now, I know the city manager listed off things that the city has done for undocumented community members who have been kidnapped. If I remember correctly, there have been visitations that apparently have occurred, and that might very well be true. But to be frank, I highly doubt that the city council themselves have partaken in these visitations. I say that because if y'all saw what I saw at that fundraiser, the daughter hustling for support on TikTok, and the wife attending folks with tears in her eyes, I think you guys wouldn't have been up there rolling your eyes, or scoffing, or scrolling through your phone like you did for the past six months, as if we were the ones out of line for asking our city leadership for help, for asking the city to simply copy what other gateway cities have done, some of which, by the way, also have Arnold Alvarez Glassman as their city attorney, interestingly enough. If you guys have, have tru- truly seen the aftermath of what these raids have done to families, I believe in my heart of hearts that y'all would have been working around the clock to mitigate the suffering that this federal, it, quote-unquote, "federal issue," as the city attorney put it, is causing working-class families. I have to believe that the only reason y'all have not moved on this issue with a sense of urgency that this current moment demands is because y'all have not witnessed the devastating, the devastating effects firsthand. I am glad the city council has finally, uh, found the courage to at least try to, and address the concerns of the community. But to be honest, this attempt to address the issue of the raids comes off as trying to save face because it should have been done on the very first day those agents set foot in LA County, and that will not be forgotten. I am grateful that at the very least, we have a community that cares and we're able to step in where the city has fallen short. I expect these ICE briefings to continue for the, for the duration of this crisis, and hope that the city council is exploring other ways to help our undocumented neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Uh, now we have Andy V.
Hello, um, I do want to start by saying I do appreciate transparency. Um, it's been, you know, five, six months that we've been asking. We finally know exactly what amount of support, you know, how much money is being put towards supporting these families, which is what we've been asking for, um, and a good acknowledgement of the fact that this is occurring in Norwalk, and that there is something being done. Um, it is quite late, but I am still thankful for, for it nonetheless. Um, that being said, there was also, um, asking about, you know, what else we might want done, and I think it's really easy to look to other cities that have done and have passed resolutions specifically addressing these issues, and in no uncertain terms. Um, a couple that I'd just like to point out, um, Montebello, in June, in the very first month, they passed a resolution, um, changing their legislative priorities in order to ensure that state bills, uh, protecting immigrant residents would be pushed for, and trying to lobby however they could in order to protect their residents in addition to a $100,000 fund for legal aid for the residents. That was done the first month. Um, Pico Rivera, um, in July, actually passed a resolution, quote, condemning the presence and conduct of US immigration and customs enforcement in the city and the violations of individuals' Fourth and Fifth Amendment rights. Um, in addition to setting up a legal aid fund. Um, both of those cities, by the way, which, um, share the same city attorney as us, so apparently cities, um, can do things for the residents regarding immigration. Um, these resolutions were passed, made it very clear where the city stood, and they made it very clear that they condemned these actions. They were against them. And they, more importantly, directed their staff to look at every single avenue, whether at local, state, or federal level, to fight back against these, and they were very public about it. Now, I know that there's been some mention about things that are being done, things that may not be very public. Um, again, I'm thankful they're finally being brought up to this public level at the city council meeting, but I think when we ask for a resolution or ordinance, it's in order to make it, put it down in words, and make it more known exactly what is being done, and give the city staff a direction of where to go. So those are what we've been asking for. Um, the resolutions, the ordinances are already written, other cities have already passed them, so it's very easy to direct your staff to go look at them and see if something similar can be brought here to Norwalk to finally, you know, basically put your money where your mouth is and show that you are standing up for your residents, and you're. and you're willing to protect them however you can do here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. I have Norwalk resident 10. This is our Norwalk resident 10 here.
Hello, yeah, I just wanted to address what was being said at the last meeting, I think I was in here. But where the city attorney, you know, cut in to let everyone know that basically you guys are doing us all a favor by letting us speak on something that isn't on the agenda, even though that's part of the Brown Act. So, I mean, I don't know why no one said any comments in regards to that, especially when the same attorney works in other cities who have done things. And we've been coming here for months and months. We've spoken to some of you afterwards, you know, we've been asking for, you know, that the things we've been asking for, like funds, calling it a sanctuary city, you know, those sorts of things. Everyone here knows that falls within city jurisdiction, you know what I mean? So it's pretty disrespectful to act like everyone here is doing us a favor when we're just trying to protect the people in our community. Some of us have been doing this since it began, you know what I mean? Talking to these businesses. I'm one of those people. You know, I started with one of my close friends early on. No business, or anywhere we went to said that anyone from the city spoke to them, that there was any outreach. We went to social services to investigate on like what they do over there. The person that worked there said that when they have done outreach, it's not through policy and stuff, it's through, you know, the individual workers themselves. So it's just pretty disrespectful, I think, to the people in this city to treat not only us like this, you know, the immigrants that are here like this, your community like this. And I think that's okay, you know, there's other cities that have done a lot more. And that's what we're asking for. And, you know, more than just some blog posts and stuff. There's a lot of us here that have jobs, people have kids, you know, and we're trying to do the best we can, raise the money we can, help feed the people that we can. And it'd be nice for the city to do something, you know, and not act like they're doing us a favor, just to hear this out.
Next is number 22.
Good evening. As a resident of Norwalk, what has happened in our city for the past few months have been something most people would deem as horrific and shameful. Shameful to claim pride in a city that, up until now, has shown some sense of movement regarding the kidnappings happening within our city. We've come as a community of concerned residents for the past few months, working together, doing what should be done by those who are empowered to do so and are met with excuses as to why it can or cannot happen. There are surrounding cities that have shown their care, their concerns, and actions against what you say is not within your control. At what point can we all agree that what is happening is horrific? Will it be when your neighbor is taken? Your children's friends are taken? Your coworker, your church member, your family member? Or the man who you pass by on the corner of the freeway exit that is just selling flowers? These are all very real scenarios that are happening right now. I may not have the power to change things, but I have a voice, just like you all do. I've been living in Norwalk for majority of my life, and I just feel like if I'm a person who sees wrong being done, I would hope that you guys would have the same compassion, the same humanity, and understanding that there are families who are suffering, families who are being affected. And it's easy to just see them as numbers, but they are just as human as you and I. And I would appreciate if you guys would just take consideration in what we are, again, trying to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 67.
Hello. I just got back from work, like mentioned, a lot of us come from work and we've been dealing. Here to talk about the issue of immigration that's been going on these, pretty much since it started. And the city's inadequacy to address this. We've heard, you know, we've gone through everything. We've gone through the bureaucratic bureaucracy, through dialogue. All of that is futile. We've only seen things being done in Norwalk by our residents that have been, you know, like mentioned, going out of their way, taking time off work, people with families, children, people who, like me, work more than full-time. And just wanted to, you know, we're tired of dialogue, we're tired of this bureaucratic nonsense. We're tired of you guys daily dallying, because this is what, it seems like this is what we see. We're not, I'm not just saying this, this is what we've been seeing these past few months. And we just want to see more action taken on these things. Like we mentioned, we had a resident taken off the 605 not too long ago. And, you know, you guys haven't addressed anything. You guys haven't, you know, we don't see anything done. And, you know, just wanted to tell you guys, you know, like we've been saying these past few months, do better, do something. This isn't something radical. This is not Antifa or whatever you guys think. This is literally just caring for people. Caring about your, you know, community, caring about who you serve. So yeah, that's all I have to say, because I don't have anything written down, but thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, N.
Hello, good evening. I'm N. I live in Long Beach, but previously in Norwalk for 26 years. I grew up in, across the street, in a studio apartment that's now Bell Bonds Building. You probably have seen it a million times, across from the MC. My family still lives here. I'm the daughter and sister of Mexican immigrants. And I'm here today to speak on behalf of those who are living in the shadows and your community, my community. On October 20th, I responded to an ICE raid alert I received on my phone. I drove to the back of a Best Buy in Signal Hill, as it is well-known staging area for ICE. Upon arrival, I immediately started documenting the convoy of ICE agents and victims, along with a number of other customers and local employees. What followed was a story out of a nightmare that I have yet to recover from. A few minutes after I arrived, a black van with masked men drove into the parking lot specifically aiming to hit me. They came out of the van with pepper and real ammunition guns and threatened to shoot me multiple times. One of them walked up to me, cocked his gun, and said, "It's a nice day to be alive", while pointing the gun directly at me. At no point was I in any violation of any law that would have required any level of force. I pleaded with them to tell me how many people they took so I could tell their family members, but they refused. Later that evening, we found out ICE raided the entire shopping center. To this day, we cannot confirm the amount of people that have been taken. The aftermath of this incident has left me with daily panic attacks, anxiety. And while I'm absolutely concerned about my safety and my physical response to the trauma is tied to the thousands of human rights abuses happening in front of our eyes, I will never forget the image of Ramiro, our local friend and daily laborer, being tackled to the ground on Cherry Street. He was the only person I was able to make eye contact with that day. And I wanted him to know that I would not forget him or the others. Today, I sat in Ramiro's trial at Adelanto. He was denied bail. I listened to DHS, the DHS attorney vilify Ramiro over a non-moving violation citing "studies without a source or metrics". I hugged his 36-year-old daughter in front of that building as she wailed in heartbreak in front of that building. Over the summer, I received a call from a Norwalk resident who witnessed a violent ambush of an older man, a US citizen who is violently and racially profiled here in Norwalk. This has been one of many kidnappings that have happened. Luckily, this one had a witness. This is the reality of our Latino community and immigrant community as a whole. The Latino community that is very much indigenous to this land. I'm just a regular citizen. I have a full-time job. And I'm not getting paid to spend my free time, literally 24/7 after my job, trying to keep communities safe. I do it because I was a child whose family was a target of Pete Wilson and Ross Perot's anti-immigrant and rhetoric policies. I have proposals that Norwalk can implement, but three minutes isn't enough time to share those with you. I will end with this. All women, Latino men, standing up here, essentially any person who is in a position of power in this room from a marginalized community are here because someone relentlessly pushed against the grain and advocated for your rights. And this is the first time I'm actually meeting this group of people. And I came because I saw a flyer. And I would show my gratitude, because you have no idea how much time they spend outside of their regular lives. Thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned.